Good evening. I'd like to call to order the 19th meeting of fiscal year 2019 of the Milton Planning Board. I'm Cheryl Taggias, the chair. Denny?
Denny Swenson, member.
Lauren Masser, Assistant Town Planner.
Brian Furz, member.
Okay, so on our agenda tonight, our administrative items, Citizen Speak, All Business, there is none, new business, one A&R, one Homeowner Association document, and then a public hearing at 7:15 for the continuation of the special permit hearing for Walcott Woods. So our next meeting dates are March 28th and April 11th. And next we have minutes. I sent you the January 24th, was it?
Yes.
With lots of edits.
Julia Gatton has some minutes for review, but she is running a bit late tonight.
Okay.
I got those via email, but I didn't get like a red line, so I couldn't tell what... Oh, do you have a red line?
I do have a... Well, it's a blue line, yes, but I do.
Okay, because I can look at that during the meeting.
Okay. I don't have the others. I would like...
When you're done.
I would like to be able to look at the others again more thoroughly, so...
Well, there seems to be an... It's like the whole thing, Brian.
Yeah.
Let's just do it next time, if that's okay.
Yeah, I think so. That's a fair number.
Yeah, I just want to give it...
Okay, so Citizen Speak. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to the board on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing none. None, right? Okay. New business. Do we need Bill for the A&R? Or Lauren, are you handling the A&R?
Yes, I can explain.
Okay. 1065 Brushhill Road. A&R is approval not required. Subdivision. Okay. Hello, Mr. Corcoran.
Hello, and while we're settling, can I turn off the...
Yes, please do.
Oh, sure. Okay. I'll turn it up. Some people are hot.
It's warm in here, but that's blowing at about 40.
Because that's the hot seat.
You lose a reporter.
Right here, so maybe it's a good thing to keep us quiet.
Or to keep you moving, right?
Turn that back on.
Something like this. I resemble that remark.
So go ahead, Lauren.
Yes, so let me get the image up on the screen.
So in our packets, we had the plan and we had the application.
Want to grab, get the light?
Yes. Let's just rotate this to the correct light. So the board will remember, 1065 Brushhill Road. But at this time, a year ago, this plan was before us for a subdivision of the property. What's before us tonight is essentially a simple correction of a lot line. I'll zoom in. I have another document that I prepared that will help clarify this a little bit. So this is way too zoomed in. If we're paying attention to the area in red, that lot line there, you'll see, is next to an existing barn. When we did the subdivision, we were under the assumption that this would be viewed as an accessory building. It's not intended for residential purposes. Typically, in this district, a residential... I'm sorry, an accessory building would require a 10-foot setback from the lot line. Since this building is actually qualified as two stories, it's looked at as it needs the setback that a living structure would be, which is 15 feet. That's why this is before us today. What this correction does, you'll see highlighted in yellow, it sets back that lot line just so that it's 15 feet off the building. It corrects the issue. This process is a simple A&R. It would allow just a slot line to be moved, and it would not... It would correct a nonconformity that's been created, because right now, it's considered a nonconforming lot. If somebody were to attempt to build a home on this lot, they would need to go and get a variance through the Board of Appeals, since it's a nonconforming lot. By doing this and correcting the slot line, we correct that.
Yeah, and this was a mistake that was originally made when we were creating the subdivision plan. We didn't real... The engineer, A, and myself, B, didn't realize that this was a two-story structure and subject to the 15-foot setback. So the original plan had a 10-foot setback. Lot 1 on that subdivision plan with the house has been sold. This L-shaped parcel is being conveyed to the Waynes, leaving parcel 2, Lot 2. When the error was discovered, when a potential buyer here went to see the building commissioner to see whether or not it would be permissible to live in the carriage barn while a new dwelling was being constructed, and Joe Pronack noticed that that lot line was drawn incorrectly. And so the purpose is simply to correct that nonconformity so that, A, we can go ahead and follow through with the conveyance of this parcel to the Waynes and then have an otherwise legal lot in parcel B. And it's really... It's correcting a mistake that the engineer and I made and was not picked up by, you know, planning staff or the board at the time that the subdivision was approved. And town council has opined that A&R is the appropriate process to go through and make the correction.
Okay.
I'm just wondering if Bjorn Olsen and Colette Wayne, the two families...
Yes. Yes, their counsel, Bob Galvin, has been involved in...
They're comfortable with someone living there?
It's a separate question whether somebody can live there. That's a separate issue.
This allows that.
No, it doesn't. This allows this parcel to be conveyed. Separate question whether someone... Under separate issues of zoning, whether someone can actually live in that barn as a primary structure. That has nothing to do with the location of the lot line. It doesn't matter whether that lot line is there or not.
It's still right against the Olsen property.
It is. It's a pre-existing nonconforming structure. It was built before zoning was put in place. It was built as an accessory barn, accessory to the original house here. It will remain, and Lot 2 is being sold for the purpose of building a new dwelling here in accordance with the subdivision.
So that parcel, that non-buildable parcel, was being conveyed to provide a greater buffer, right?
Correct.
So what you're asking is just to modify the buffer to correct the setback distance that should have been there when it was... When we approved it originally?
Correct. It's a technical error in the plan that we're asking to be corrected.
And Lauren, you and Bill have reviewed, right?
Yes, John Flynn, town council, has also reviewed. He believes this is the correct route to take.
Oh, I'll get him.
No, he was... He just closed it.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're just closing it? I'm sorry, I thought it was April trying to get in.
I was just trying to cut down the noise coming from that end. Okay, so any thoughts, questions, comments about the requests or the application? Turn the lights back on. Is that locked? Sorry, could someone check that? Door issues here. All right, so if there are no comments, concerns, or questions, I'll take a motion.
That door needs to be left open or locked.
Yeah, otherwise it'll be locked. You can leave that open, Alan.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to allow Bill Clark, Town Planner, to certify this plan as approval not required.
Your second?
I just have that one reservation. I want to be sure that the neighbors have been notified. I know Galvin's... So your understanding is that Galvin has notified the two neighbors?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
There's clients.
All right, I'll take your word for it. Does that mean you're going to do a second, Denny?
We have a closing pending.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there... One of the neighbors is being...
Becky said she didn't know there was a meeting tonight on this... That's Bjorn Olsen. And that's her barn. I mean, it's...
She's one of the butters.
Okay. I can only represent what has been represented to me by counsel for the neighbors.
So you, as counsel for the applicant, have consulted with counsel for the neighbors?
Yes.
And that counsel has said that they don't take exception to this?
Can I just back up for a second? So in any case, this is an approval not required plan. So if Bill's not here, Lauren, maybe you're able to speak to it. I can speak to it if you'd like, but I prefer to have planning speak to it. But my understanding of approval not required plan is that essentially, it moves a lot line, and so long as it's not making a conforming lot... And excuse me, as long as it's not creating an unconforming lot, we don't have any jurisdiction to not approve this plan. And if we don't approve it tonight, we either have to reject it, or it will be approved by default, because we have to act within 21 days. So if you're not comfortable approving it, I think that's okay, but we should probably just take a vote to not take any action.
So Rich, you received in your packet this application for an A&R, 1065 Brushhill Road. Did you have a chance to review it? And do you have any questions for the applicant or for Lauren?
No, but I obviously missed what you guys were just talking about.
So the question was whether the two neighbors on the side had been apprised of it and whether they were supportive of it. Ned said that through counsel they were and that they supported. Brian reminded us that it's not... If it meets the requirements, then it's not something that we have jurisdiction to say no to, in a sense. So that's where we were when you came in?
A little bit more of an update. Yeah, we... Well, so one of the neighbors didn't know about the meeting tonight, but that doesn't necessarily mean that she doesn't know about this specific thing. We're a little bit up in the air. But the other part of this, the background for you, is that this neighborhood was super, super involved at one point. 14 different neighborhood members seemed to be here, and I hate to leave them out, even though it's a minor technicality. The barn is two stories high, which we weren't even thinking about at the time of the lot lines. And two stories high means a difference requirement for a setback of...
And then...
From 10 to 15 feet, so that's why he's trying to change it. So two stories, I'm concerned that it could impact the neighbors, because two stories could mean living, dwelling, or could get them closer to a living dwelling.
It has been... I'll say this, it is a... It has a dwelling unit in it. It is inhabited. It has been inhabited as a caretaker's residence for a long period of time.
Oh, so it has been inhabited?
Currently inhabited by one of the tenants.
Honestly, none of that's relevant.
No, I understand A&R, you...
Right, I just want to make sure we don't get into a legal situation, that's all.
No, I get it.
And the other thing, Rich, is that town council, John Flynn, has advised that this is the appropriate way to handle this. It was the thing that, again, that we talked about was that a potential buyer had gone in to speak to the building commissioner and was alerted to the fact that because this is a two-story structure, the setback was to have been 15 feet instead of 10, when the boundary lines were drawn for this subdivision that was approved by the board. So it was a technical mistake made by the engineer and then not caught by applicant's counsel, town counsel, or the board or staff at the time. So it's... The intent was to allow this to be subdivided and be a buildable lot without an encumbrance, and so this would correct that and allow that intent for that subdivision.
Thanks.
So there's 21 days. Where are we at in that?
It was filed...
Good question.
It's dated March 8th. Is there a received date on it? Right.
So if we approve it on our March 28th date, we're within our... And that would, if there's an issue that we're not aware of...
But if the issue... If there's an issue that we're not aware of that is not relevant to our jurisdiction on this, we have to be mindful that...
That's fine, but it gives the parties a chance to work it out if they haven't been informed. I trust Ned that they have been informed, but...
I can only represent Bob Galvin, who represented the entire neighborhood.
I propose that we...
But we have a motion.
We don't have a second.
We don't have a second, so I'll second it, and we can continue the discussion. So Brian has made a motion to authorize Bill Clark to endorse this as the site plan or as a subdivision, not requiring...
Approval.
Approval.
Approval not required.
Approval not required, technically.
So, Denny, I understand your position. My concern is, I mean, you're right, we're within the 21 days. We're sort of adding to the agenda for no reason next time, but I get what you're saying. I mean, there's... We can't, in my opinion, we can't legally... I'm not a lawyer, but I don't think we can legally not approve this or not certify this as approval not required. So...
What would you be looking to get out of the next meeting?
If there is an issue, it would give the neighborhood a chance to resolve it. If they... If in fact, they don't know, which I'm hearing from a neighbor, that they don't know, that they didn't know about this meeting tonight, then it would just give them a chance. The 28th, we could sign it off quick as can be. On the 28th, it wouldn't take us too much time. It might be an inconvenience for Ned, but I'm also, just process-wise, I think the neighbors should... In a situation like this, they should be here or there should be a letter saying that they are in support of it. It would have made things fly right through.
Lauren?
So as Brian's touched on, the... Within the planning board's jurisdiction, this A&R meets all the requirements of an A&R. There is no legal requirement to notify a butters in a typical A&R process, so all the requirements have been met for this process, and this does meet with the original intent of the subdivision that was issued by this board less than a year ago. As Cheryl explained, I'll just explain for her a little bit more clarity. The building, the existing building that is in question here typically would be viewed, we thought would be viewed as an accessory structure. In this residential district, the setback would be 10 feet. Given that it is a two-story structure, our zoning enforcement officer views this as requiring the same setbacks as would be a residential structure. That is why it's 15 feet, not 10 feet. That was the technical issue. This is the correction for that.
Question. Where's the lot... We are... Excuse me. You are taking five feet away from...
From the Waynes.
From the part... The buffer parcel that was conveyed.
So just one more point for you to think about, Denny. The Waynes that will have to... They will have the opportunity to not convey that if they have a problem with it. So the most directly affected butter are being the Waynes. This A&R plan can't happen unless they agree to let their lot line be moved. So theoretically, if they have a problem with it, they just won't allow their lot line to be moved.
Which we have, and we've got a closing pending.
Right, so... Okay, I've said my piece.
Okay, so you are not changing or withdrawing your motion?
Without drawing my motion, no.
Okay, so then we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion?
All right. I've just made a comment first, because I'm... I mean, I don't like... It's tough, this dynamic, because I get, Denny, your point. I just might... I think my vote is kind of solid. If this is... If the law is what you're saying it is, and we don't have really any jurisdiction there, we have a... I think we have a lot going on next week.
Yeah. Well, one thing I'll comment about the A&R, we have had a lot of conversations about notification on the A&Rs, and regardless of the fact that the law doesn't require a notification, we have let it be known that we would like the butters to be known, to be made aware. And I understand from counsel that that has happened, so I'm not... And I think where this is relatively technical correction and not a new A&R that hasn't been discussed at great length in the past, my sense is that this is a case in which we really have a choice to continue it and have another conversation of 15 minutes and two weeks, or have it tonight, yeah.
Sorry, not to cut you off. My problem with that is, though, I don't know that there's anything we could do if we have another discussion about it.
There isn't.
And if there's no thing we can do, then I wouldn't want to prolong inevitable.
So I just want to respond to... So legally, we do not have to notify neighbors. Legally, we do not have to. But when you're in a situation with a shared way that's pretty complicated...
Yeah.
I think you... And they've shown up and shown up and shown up. I think we can go a little bit above and beyond and notify them and just... I think I'm willing to spend another 15 minutes on it, just out of consistent...
Yeah, no, I agree with you 100%. I just... My worry is that it's an A&R, and this is kind of different than what the other things we talk about with special permits and site plan rules and bringing neighbors in to talk about mitigating.
Yeah.
I don't know what recourse we have, unless you think there are some.
Well, I just think if they don't know, it gives them a chance to work it out amongst themselves. And if they do know, then we'll sign off on the 28th.
Okay, so we have a motion that's been seconded, and we have a locked door again.
Still have a locked door. We're going to have a public meeting violation in a minute if we don't fix that problem.
Was it locking?
Yeah.
All right, so again, we have a motion that's been seconded. We're going to take a vote. All those in favor?
All right.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
And all those abstaining, I assume?
Aye.
Okay.
Rich, did you vote? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you vote.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. I have a... My cold is coming down, but now I can't hear out of my ears. I might be yelling across the table.
All right. Next on the agenda, Lauren, if you could address this a little bit in terms of the context, but we haven't received the document, so if you could just give us an overview so that we're prepared for the timing, sort of the issue of the timing, and so that we can act on this in our next meeting?
Yes. So the next item, Homeowner Association document, approval for Milton Woods, commonly referred to as the Pulte Development. That Homeowner Association document is a requirement of the special permit. It needs to be approved by town council and this board prior to the issuance of the first occupancy permit. There is a potential buyer lined up for the first home in that development. They have a closing date toward the end of this month. This document, the Homeowner Association document, prepared by the development team, has been provided to town council. There was hope and intention that it would be ready for review this evening by the board for approval. Given that there is a 48-hour posting requirement for the planning board agendas, we were advised by town council that we should keep it on the agenda with the hope that it would be prepared and available for you all. That timeline ran a bit later, so we will now suggest that this be continued to the next meeting on the 28th.
But the... So go ahead, Brian.
Nope, go ahead.
No.
The judge said, "Just to set the expectation, I can't get it that day." So we need a few more days than one to read it. I won't be able to read it sitting at my office, so...
We also have two new members, Rich and I. We're not involved at all in the special permit, so we're going to have to read through the special permit and make sure that the homeowners thing. So we're going to need more than 48 hours. Thank you. Thank you. I'm glad we're in agreement on that.
It said town council. That's the holdup.
Yes. So is it available yet?
Town council is going to send it to...
Is there any reason we can't read it at the same time? And then he can let us know if there are issues, that we need to redline or something? I mean, there's no reason we have to do it.
He...
Certainly send it to us, and he can then answer any questions we might have as well.
We can ask him. He sent me an email, I believe it was this morning, saying that he had reviewed it and he was sending his comments to Pulte's council?
Yeah, I don't understand why we can't all review it at the same time, though, because if we get it three days before, it's going to continue again.
Sure.
Well, I'd actually like to get it, like, as close to complete it, because we're... I mean, there's so much material coming at us. I'd like to get...
I hear you.
If you want to go ahead, but I just just wait until I have it completed.
I would like as much time as I can, just because if I have an hour here and there and I can sit down and read it, I would like to be able to get it done.
I'm on that page.
So we don't have a copy? I have... I don't have a copy. Do you have a copy, Lauren?
I don't have a copy.
So we'll have to request it from town council. Okay, so that'll be on the 28th.
Yeah, so a motion to continue...
You don't think we have to do that, Brian?
Oh, we don't need to. You're right, I'm sorry. I was thinking about it. Sorry.
All right, so...
All business.
Will that go into our doc... Is she in folder?
Yes.
Okay.
I kept looking for it, too.
Okay, so we're going to now move on to the continuation of the Walcott Woods special permit hearing. Okay, so before you get started, Ned and Alan, we have representatives from the Shade Tree Advisory Committee here and from the Historical Commission, so we would like to have them be able to address us early in this discussion rather than later, since both have waited in the past.
Sure.
All right, so if you could adapt what you were going to say to allow that to happen, that would be great. So Shade Tree? I'm just going to let Ned, if he wants to give an overview first, okay?
But we appreciate you enthusiasm.
Sure, and so Ned Corcoran and Alan Ockman here on behalf of Northland Residential. Jack Dolly is in two other hearings tonight in Belmont. Apologizes for not being able to be here, but I guess he trusts us to represent him going forward. So I think our goals tonight, I think, and with respect to yours, one was we know that STACK was here and had a... Was specifically understood that they would be coming and reporting on their review of the shade... Of the tree planting portion of the plan. I think we had a robust discussion on the issue of the tree preservation plan, but I think there were comments that were pending relative to the tree, proposed street tree planting, and so obviously, we're anxious to hear that. Brief follow-up on the construction management plan. We've redlined a document based on the comments we heard a couple of weeks ago. We just want to make sure we share those. We've got a brief follow-up on the garage unit mix, changing out the BBs and the DDs to Bs and BsCs and CsDs and some different garage elevation issues. And then a review of open issues and Historic Commission. We can move the Historic Commission up to immediately after the STACK process and go from there. I think we've done what we've done relative to the presentation on the Shade Tree, so we're anxious to hear from STACK and happy to...
Yeah, we'll stop and go.
Okay. Thank you. Now, please come forward.
Hello, I'm Kristin Kleiman, member of the Shade Tree Committee, and I've got some of my colleagues sitting here tonight, so as always, I may be referring to their collective wisdom if you ask me hard questions. So thanks again for inviting us. We were here on Valentine's Day last time, and you asked us then to weigh in specifically on the tree plan. And so Northland did send us a landscape plan, the quadrant one, I think you've all seen. Alan sent that to us shortly after that meeting, we'll say around the 17th of February. So we have a few comments, but one of the things I just wanted to say right up front is that the Shade Tree is always going to want more trees. That's the prism with which we look at the world. And so we're going to be advocating for trees every time you ask us. And so one of the things we also want to say is that we're not landscape architects and we're not designers. So we will give you these comments, and then we turn it over to the planning board and Northland to discuss what the design aesthetics are and all of that. So that's just the framework for our comments. And these comments come from all of us. I just... The committee would ask me to do this again, so this is a reflection of the members' comments. So one of the things that we noticed was, and those... So, one of the things that we noticed was, in those quadrant plans that, that Northland has, it shows the tree heights and not the tree calipers. And so, we reached out to Alan, and he said that was an oversight, and that there should be the calip, the tree calipers on there. And they should be three to three and a half inches diameter breast height. So that's something we think needs to be on the plan. If you look at other plans, you'll, you'll see that they actually are called out, but we think it should be on all the plans. So that's just a, sort of a housekeeping item. So there's a couple of comments we have on the new driveway, okay? So, we suggest adding some more trees to the, near to the entrance. I don't have the map with me, but there's a gap on, on, I think it would be the northeast side. There's a gap in the existing trees, and what we would suggest is that there'd be more trees planted there. And the reason being is that we'd be looking for succession planning. So you put some trees along the side, some of the mature trees may die in five or 10 years, and you'll have mature trees that will be in the understory. Because of the, the way that the driveway is, you're, you're going to have these trees be on the edge. So they should get sufficient light. So they, they're not going to be shaded out, because they're gonna be, they're gonna have that edge effect. So, we would suggest a few more trees near the entrance, and you'll see on the plan that there are some existing trees, and then there's a few gaps. We would suggest some, some shade trees there. We were also wondering why, and this maybe gets into the aesthetics part. On, on the northeast side of the, that new driveway, past the Devens entrance, Northland's got a wonderful strip of maples, sugar maples, I believe, on the, we'll say, the right-hand side. And they've got the fence there. And there's nothing on the left-hand side. And so, it may be an aesthetic thing, but we were wondering why there isn't an LA of trees on, on both sides. So, it's a question, it's a suggestion for you to look at. So that would be on the new driveway. There's what I call the existing driveway, which will become the fire access. And it's generally the same comment that we have on the new driveway. If you look at the existing canopy, you'll see that there's gaps in the canopy, especially on that particular side, on the left-hand side or the northeast side. There's a fair amount of land there, that you've got the forest, and then you've got the fire access road. And it looks like you could probably plant some, a significant amount of trees along that, that stretch, maybe at 30-foot centers, the maples and the oaks. And the, again, the reason we have this, this thought process is, if you've been up there, there's some wonderful old trees, but there are some wonderful old trees that are not going to be around, maybe in 10 or 15 years. And we were thinking that, even though it's fire access, we suspect that people would wanna walk that area. So it would, it would just, we think, provide a lovely shaded area for residents or visitors to, to walk along there. So, that's something for the north, for the existing driveway, the fire access road. I only have a couple more comments. The, there's a, the building cluster, as I call it in the back, buildings 26 to 31, which is closest to the Blue Hills. If our math is correct, and our rulers are correct, it looked like the, the oaks were more like 50 to 60 feet apart, and not 30 feet or 40 feet apart. So, that, again, goes, you know, I'm, I'm gonna turn that over to, to, to the Planning Board, but we would suggest that they'd be clo, they'd be spaced more closely. If they are, in fact, 50 to 60, that 30 feet might be a good idea. Again, there's driveways involved, so we're not, we're not going to be dogmatic about it, it's a suggestion. And we, we noticed on the management plan, so there's, you know, we've got the, the management plan attached to these, the, the drawings, and there's a comment that references, I'm gonna just read here, the minute, the minimum different distance for excavation from trees. And it says, "See layout plan for width." And we don't have the width, we don't have the layout plan, so we don't know what the width, width is there. So that's just a, like a housekeeping item, we don't have any context. But the excavation is so important to the health of existing trees, I'm, I'm sure there, it's somewhere. But we don't, we, we have no comment on that.
Can you, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You say that one again? Do you mind just saying that one again?
Sure, sure, sure. Okay, so there's, under the management plan, there's an excavation near existing trees. And there's a comment that refers to a minimum distance for excavation from trees, right?
Yep.
And so, and then it says, it doesn't say anything else about what the minimum distance, it just says, "See layout plan for the width."
Got it.
And we never saw the layout plan.
Okay.
And that's near and dear to our heart.
Got it, thank you.
Yep, so we suggest the minimum distance be clarified. And on the plant list, again, we think Northland's done a very good job of identifying native trees. We had asked, I think it was last time, that the genus and species be called out. It may be an oversight, but for the evergreens, it's just, you know, pine species. And we just wanna make sure that the evergreens are as much as possible native evergreens. So the genus and species we'd like called out. So that's our, our specific comments on the plan. We generally think it's, it looks great. We did wanna reiterate as, as a committee, that we would encourage a formal process by which the Planning Board ensures that Northland, the developer guarantees, and I know that's a legal word, so maybe we avoid that, ensures the health and, and well-being of the trees, and the maintenance of those, of the trees, whether they're existing significant trees, or whether they're the new trees. And, you know, we talked about it, I think it was last time, that we had, we would suggest using something similar to the bond that was used on Hillside Street, where, you know, there's, some monies put aside, and if there's, if there's tree mortality, that the town can then, you know, reach into those coffers and replace those trees. And then if everything goes hunky-dory, the money goes back to the developer, and, and we're all good. So, we just really wanna make sure that, that that process is, starts to become part of the town's process, where the, the trees are protected. And that, my friends, is it. Any questions? Comments?
So, Lauren? Any questions?
I have none.
So, don't leave yet, because we'd like to have Alan have an opportunity to come forward and, and give comments on these. Alan, did you, I took notes, if you'd like me to go through them again, or did you take?
I took notes, too.
You got them? Okay. All right.
Did this hurt anything? So, yeah, as I said to Kristin, on the first comment, the tree labeling where the heights were given, not caliper size for the, the street trees, was more of a copying a label that was used for multi-stem trees, and it got applied to everything. So that would be something that we wanna correct in the final set.
Okay.
Along the new drive, two comments. That gap, I think on the left-hand side, as you come up?
Yeah.
Yep. I think that's, that's not a problem. There is a, a small subsurface drainage chamber there, so we'd have a little bit of a gap, but I think we can work around that and be fine with that. Past Devens, the maples lie on one side and not the other. Sort of hearkening to the, the current experience of driving into the site where the driveway runs along, an open meadow on the one side, and the, the tree line on the other side. We wanted to preserve that experience, so that that meadow is experienced fully. And then, why not leave both sides open is, is probably the next question. And, and planting the uphill side towards, along the upper meadow, the thinking was that that would filter the views of the homes at the upper end of that slope, just enough. You'd see, you'd see the peekaboo, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't lose the meadow on the one side, and it wouldn't be all homes on the other.
And part of that goes back a couple of years to the discussion about maintaining the view of the Devens House, and what the experience that people are used to looking at, if they're standing on Canton Avenue, they look under and they see the Devens. And so what they see today is what they'll see tomorrow. And the notion of sort of putting trees between them would, would change that up. And so I think that's the, that was, those are the thinking that went behind the decision not to recommend trees on the left-hand side.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay, so that's one that we'll have to weigh in on eventually, but, okay, keep going.
The Manor House driveway, filling in the, sort of, gaps, or, you know, planning, planning for essentially the demise of existing trees. I don't think, you know, fundamentally have any problem with that. We hadn't really considered any disturbance or activities in the Manor House lawn, so it just really didn't enter our, our thinking. We'd have to talk to the client about that, I would think, but it, but fundamentally, you know, planting more trees is.
Yeah, the whole notion of Manor House area was leave it alone.
Yeah.
So, the, the request was to think about the driveway that's being abandoned, except for emergency? It's a consider along there, but was it into the, it wasn't into the field as well, right? Or anything close to the home, right?
No.
So it was purely, the request was to think about along the, the former driveway, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's, again, something that we'll have to discuss as a board, okay? And then the buildings 26 and 31?
Yeah, the street trees along 26 to 31.
You got that planned?
Yeah, on the quadrant plan, it does show up as, I'm not sure if all the trees are on there, but in between that wider spacing, and we looked at that in a blow-up last week together.
You have that, Lauren?
Our.
Which, is this the correct plan you're referencing?
No, it won't be on what we gave you today, it'd be in a folder from last week.
You don't have that.
Yeah. So when we zoomed in there last week, if you recall, I, in different shades of green, we had pulled out the Shade Tree species, and then evergreen trees, and ornamental, and understory trees. So in the spacing, that does, probably is roughly 50 feet between, trust your memory on that, oaks along that section.
Yeah, cork is by color.
Yep. The, there are clusters of evergreens to cut the view between the buildings from the sidewalk. So, that's why we have the greater spacing, to, to have a variety of tree types along the edge of the street.
So, I, I listened last week to, or watched on TV, and so it, it did appear to me that you had some trees, and then you had some, some smaller shrubs. It didn't show up on the plan that I had, so that was, that was the difference. So, one of my colleagues told me to watch you guys last week. So I, yeah, it, it might just be a, a matter of having a more updated plan.
Sure. Well, in the way, in the way it was presented, we had a, it was done in PowerPoint, so you, it lit up different elements.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. So there are more trees there, but they might not have been called out on the, on the quadrant plans.
Okay. So, the quad, so the, what we, what, your presentation isn't actually one of the final documents, so you'll be updating the quadrant plans then, or?
Right, well, whether the, they were called out. Right, so they're on these plans, but they, they weren't called out on that. You'll recall that that's one section that, as we worked through the, the blow-up plans and the typical unit treatment, we did not have a blow-up plan of that section that highlighted plants there. But the treatment is the same, and then, this submitted drawings didn't show anything beyond what's in the, excuse me, the presentation drawings did not show anything that's not in the submitted set.
So it just was more graphically evident in the presentation than in that set? Okay. And are they called out on that set, did you say?
No.
So, we wouldn't know what they are if they're not called out, right?
There's a key, right, so.
Okay.
Right, right.
So, I'm just curious, so, would they, would they be closer than 50 to 60 feet apart? Or would they be 30 feet apart?
Yeah, they'd be within, with, if you would group in those, you know, all the trees in there, they would be closer to 50 feet, 25 feet apart on average, then.
25 feet, alright, good. And that will be in the final plan that gets filed as agreement?
Yeah, that's why I was asking if they were gonna update those plans.
They're.
But he said they're there, it's just that it maybe wasn't evident, because they weren't, it's just via a key. But in the key, is the size of them noted? Because you're going to update the quadrant plan anyway, to make sure you get the tree caliper, right?
Right.
So, maybe.
So, keyed as evergreen trees. We can, we can call it typical sizes on, on all the trees.
I, I think that would be useful.
Management plan, I would have to go back and look at that note, and, and be able to, to link that, so we can highlight that for response.
And the trees you're adding, will they be three and a half, one more calipers?
Okay, so you'll get back to us on the management plan question? Okay.
Filling out the plant list for more specificity on evergreen species, we'll do that.
And that's, that's also on the plans, right? Not in a narrative?
Right, that's in a, that's in a typical or specific plant list on, on the plant sites.
Okay.
So we can fill that in. And then the guarantee or bond, Ned's better at bonds than I am. But I think we've had some discussion of this already, and.
I think that, I think the notion of some form of a bond is, is reasonable. You know, I'd like to see what was done for the Hillside as an example, so we can evaluate that, and see how that works.
So they had a diminishing bond, they had a three-year?
One of the things, I mean, at the end of the day, the construction activities here are gonna move quadrant, and quadrant by quadrant by quadrant, we're gonna be, they'll be constructing for five years. So, most of the trees, the street trees, as you move through the project, will have been installed and had two or three years, or four years of, of time on the site. It'll be the last quadrant where you'll be finishing, closing up, coming back the following year to make sure everything's working, you know, presumably, that's where you want the bond to be in place, because you wanna make sure that the last of the work is accounted for. But certainly, you know, some form of a bond like that is, is, I, I think is, you know, we think would be appropriate.
Sure. I think, I could be completely wrong on this, but often a bond, I mean, some of those cases might be in place when the trees or the, whatever's being built is gonna be accepted by the town on a public way, which is a little different here, where it's a private way, and the trees won't become sort of town responsibility. So I don't know if the board sees those two differently from what happened, has happened on other projects.
The challenge with a bond in that case is not that we don't wanna protect the species, it's that I'm not sure how we use the bond on private property. So we should probably talk to John Flynn about that, and understand if we have a big pot of money to protect trees that are on private land, we probably can't enforce it anyway, because we can't enter private land. So there, there may be a different mechanism that we wanna deploy here through final issuance, or, or something along that. John or his colleagues.
So, there is also something, they had offered $300 per caliper for species.
There's a separate penalty provision that deals with violations of the tree preservation plan.
Right.
So that could actually.
That goes into the tree fund.
That would actually help us, we wouldn't have to chase them through any legal ring.
That's if they cut them down, though. This is, we're talking about if they die.
Right, or they don't, because of maintenance, yeah.
And I guess we could theoretically.
But it's good to have both.
You could just put the bond into the STACK fund, and then the trees could be replaced somewhere else in town. But it doesn't really go to the spirit of the project if we did that.
Right, I do think it's a good idea to talk to John Flynn.
I guess the question would be whether the condo, or Homeowners Association could have some responsibility transferred to it, just as it would on the roadway and stormwater and other maintenance, so that it's on, that that money, those monies would be.
It will, and they'll be obligated to maintain the, the plan in accordance with the special permit, but unless they're looking to do something, there's no enforcement mechanism.
So.
Maybe we should talk to Prondak, too. Because he should.
Yeah.
Yep, I think that's a great idea.
Okay, so Lauren, can you look, speak to both John Flynn and Joe Prondak about that?
Yes.
Okay.
But while we're on maintenance. But while we're on maintenance, I think you did have some provisions about water and, so there was a maintenance plan. So that's going to help. And that, will that be, that's part of the tree maintenance plan, which is separate from the construction, but it's all the same, it's all.
There are, there are a number of plans, maintenance plans. The tree preservation and protections plan, which deals with the preservation of trees during, existing trees during construction. There's also a maintenance protocol that's part of what gets handed to, to the condominium association that deals with the maintenance of roadways, drainage, infrastructure, trees, et cetera. And there'll be a maintenance protocol built into that relative to how street trees are watered and maintained.
So what we, and we talked about the tree preservation plan somewhat on the 14th, right? But I think also, you know, certainly what we wouldn't want, we'd want to have some assurance that the homeowners association, right, is going to be fully aware of the requirements that are in the special permit, so that the no disturbance zones don't all of a sudden have loss of vegetated material, right? And that the preservation of the trees, particularly in the view corridors that were being preserved or where the new trees are being added, that they have responsibility to, to maintain those in a way that is consistent with the special permit, right? So it's not just upon the developer, it needs to make, there needs to be mechanisms that the, that the homeowners association has awareness in each sale, right? So whatever, I guess in their homeowners association documents, right?
Right, the conservation.
So is that, is that in the document?
Yeah, the homeowners association acquires all of the rights and obligations of the developer under the special permit. The special permit's a recorded document. It's specifically referred to in homeowners association. The obligations are transferred to the homeowners association and then each, each unit owner, when it purchases, he or she purchases the unit, purchases the unit subject to all of those recorded obligations.
We appreciate that, but you, you probably are, well, I mean, maybe homeowners, lawyers are going to read through every document that's in the special permit. But having something that really is a cheat sheet, if you will, on the, the things that are really likely that they will pay more attention to, like, you know, they're going to have to maintain the landscape in certain way, that they can't do certain things to the landscape, have to maintain the stormwater a certain way, right? Because otherwise, the special permit documents, a lot of it will have already been done, you know, it's more there for the record.
Are you suggesting some form of a simple checklist of maintenance obligations that?
That's why I'm, I'm.
One, one big part that, one big part that lives on is the conservation restriction, which is held by the conservation commission. And there's a annual, there's a reporting obligation there, an oversight there that the HOA will be in partnership with the commission and.
Okay, so that's.
surveilling these things. And generally, I think, you know, my experience being, you know, working alongside of these projects at many different stages is that the, the homeownership is, you know, very keen on preserving what they bought into. And so when individuals or boards want to drift, there's a lot of tug in the other direction. And if, I've seen homeowners, you know, come back to boards like this and hold up special permits. So some of these things do live on forever, in a very active way.
Right, I mean, in some places, you can't take a tree down without permission from a, a review body, right? It might be the homeowners association.
Right.
So, I mean, that, I mean, if you're going to great efforts to preserve trees, what if a buyer comes in and says, you know what, I want a little more sun on this side and I want to take down that big tree that was, that's on the property? There would be nothing to tell them they couldn't do that right now, right?
Yes, there would. So a homeowner really owns from the painting. There's no outdoor exclusive use area outside of the deck, you know, the bounds of the.
Outside the deck, okay.
So there's, there's no, nobody has say to do that independently.
Okay.
So it's, it's.
So that would be a vote of the association?
Yeah.
Or the board?
Yep, well, so if, if, there's different layers here, right? So if it's in the, within the preserved open space, then you got to get the conservation commission involved as well.
Right.
And so at very least, it would be the, the board and having to get neighbors on board for it being a good, you know, just cause.
So I guess maybe the thing that I'm thinking is to help that association is if you put together some kind of summary of the documents that they will be responsible, you know, it's a kind of a maintenance going forward, right? Because a lot of this is going to be about how you're building it, what you're building and how you're building it. And they're going to come in afterwards, right? But the things that are living on beyond that are the things that, that at least they can be referred to and then maybe even have on hand for, you know, people to be looking at. I doubt they're going to need to refer to the rest of, a good number of these documents down the road.
I know, you know, this is where we need Jack here tonight because he could describe. So when somebody closes on a home, it comes with a binder as thick as any of these full of, you know, all the warranties, handbooks and all the rest. I'm not sure, you know, what all goes in there in terms of, of course, they get the, the condo docs and all the rest, but certainly this is part of.
They get a copy of the special permit.
Mm-hmm. And where that, sort of the cheat sheet versus the whole thing resides.
Yeah, I mean, it could just be a summary of here's the things that we want to particularly draw your attention to because they have ongoing maintenance. We're sensitive to the fact that special permits that were granted decades ago, you know, have come back to us for amendments and things have happened that weren't, maybe new generations of owners weren't familiar with. So it's just, we're trying to, once trees are taken down in large quantities, they're not coming back very quickly. So it's one thing to change paint color of something, it's another thing to take down a building or trees, right? So that, that's, that's where some of the concern or the request is coming from.
Sure.
Okay, other?
I had a topic that wasn't on this list.
On, as far as the trees and landscape, okay.
Yeah.
Would you like Christine to say?
Oh, sure, I didn't want, I didn't know if we finished with that list. So as far as the protecting the trees, I know you're working section by section. What I'm concerned most about is that subcontractors could come on the site and say, oh, this is a great place to park a Bobcat or dump a pile of whatever or, because they just, you know, they're, they're in their own tunnel vision, thinking about what they're thinking about. They have no idea that we've spent all this time worrying about the trees and the roots and the open space and protecting this. So I understand that you're going to put fencing in the quadrant that you're working in, but I'm concerned about everywhere else that subcontractors can go. So I didn't know.
Right, well, generally, those bounds will be fenced. So to get beyond them, you have to go through the fencing.
As an owner's project manager on site every day.
Mm-hmm. When you say the bounds are fenced, you mean that the boundary of the quadrant will have a construction fence around the entire perimeter of the quadrant?
Right, whether it's.
Not fences around, I'm just trying to.
So.
You may fence every tree within, inside the construction zone, but you're actually saying that the construction zone will be fully fenced all the way around? Separating it from the rest of the parcels?
There will be erosion control, certainly downhill from the work of, at the minimum, which presents, creates a barrier. And all trees to be protected, limits of clearing are fenced to keep machinery or fill from going any, any, any cutting, any, any going any farther. So, and that's, signs are posted and that happens before anything else happens, right? The, the, these things get flagged and fenced. So those bounds are established.
Within the quadrant.
Right.
So you, you see what I'm concerned about, you have some incredible beech trees over here that aren't in this quadrant and I don't want, you know, but you're saying someone.
The owner, the owner has a project manager on site.
Every day?
Every day, general contractor has, has his project manager on site every day. Subs may come and go with specific components. They're going to be doing only what, they're only going to be in and out doing what they're doing and they're getting out off the property.
Yeah.
Because I've been to the Pulte site, for example, it's a large site similar to this one, five times. And the, they've never, has never been there, not once.
What's up in there?
They, they don't have the general contractor there. They just have subcontractors coming and going all day. The five times I've just stopped by to take a look, I went to look at the stormwater in the front and to look at the variety of things in the back and.
One suggestion I would make is the construction management plan should specifically reference the tree management plan, which should probably be attached to the construction management plan.
They're both separate.
I know, but you should probably attach it anyway, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're both, particularly because the tree management plan.
But the CMP should, should reference the tree management plan.
I think it does.
It does, particularly because the tree management plan has penalties in it.
Correct, I know, I'm aware of that, right? And maybe there's even an opportunity to have the owner's representative sign it such that if there's a new owner's representative that comes in, if there's a replacement of the owner's representative over five years, they can require a new signature to be, to be on file with who the owner's rep is with the building department. So at least there's an acknowledgement, I've read this, I'm signing it on behalf of myself as the owner's rep.
So there is, last meeting we reviewed this, right? Yeah, so there is a tree protection section. It's a paragraph. But it does reference the protective fencing as being required as shown on the tree preservation and protection plan. And then there is section here too, like later, about meetings with all of the subs to go over the plan, that's my recollection.
Does, does it say anywhere in the agreement that there will be a general contractor on site every day?
Northland is its own general contractor, so they have a Northland employee or three or four, however many are there in a given moment, are there every day.
To your point, I would say we should include that in the CMP, that a representative, owner's representative should be on site during construction hours.
Okay.
I would reference that in the CMP, I think that's a good.
So does that go on the conditions list?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we have to approve the CMP, so we can put it in as a condition and make sure that it's in there.
Okay, we, we requested some revisions of that at our last meeting, right? So if you could incorporate this one into your next revision.
That will probably be attached to the special permit, won't it, the CMP?
Yes.
It'll be referenced, yeah.
So there you go, Denny, it'll be in there as an attached document.
Okay.
I think it's Exhibit C.
Right. But it's going, it needs to, further amendments based on last week's discussion, okay.
We have a red line for tonight showing the changes that were requested last week. But we can, we can further amend it if it's necessary after tonight.
Okay.
There was one note I wanted to come back to from the 14th, Valentine's Day. See, I think you had mentioned that you folks would rather see Winterbury rather than Vinca Minor.
Yes.
Is that right? So is that something?
It was, it was.
That's my note and I could be wrong.
Or no Vinca Minor, whatever.
No Vinca Minor, yeah, it could be.
There might be enough growing up there already, we don't even need to add more, right?
Right, amen.
So when you're going to revise the plans, yeah, one second, I'll come to you here. If you could pick that up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then before we finish tree and landscape, Hale, you wanted to address us on this?
I do have a question.
Can you come forward Hale, just speak into the microphone, thank you.
My name's Hale Smith, I live at 1632 Canton Avenue, and I have a question for Alan. You stated that under the town standard for tree streets, that there would be 100, I think, 52 trees required? Is that correct?
I'd have to go back and look.
Okay.
Yeah, but this sounds about right.
And that currently, under your general tree plan, you're putting in 171 trees, I think. And I guess my question is, well, how many actual street trees are you putting in?
That was on the breakdown on the slides from last week, and I don't know if I took that printed out. 171 inclusive of the street trees in terms of oaks, maples, plane trees and the like, evergreens, understory trees, ornamental trees within the roadway section. I think I broke that all out and I would have to look. I think it was, the breakdown was somewhere in the range of 60 to 70 in the oak, maples, plane tree category and about an equal breakdown of, of the others.
Okay, well, I would make an observation that the town street tree standard is for tree trees. It's not for ornamental trees, it's not for understory trees. And if in fact, the numbers that Alan has just told us are correct, Northland's putting in about half the investment in the street trees that our standard would normally require. And that's, that's a concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have that, I didn't bring it, what's there?
I don't know, we got it.
We didn't get a printout.
It was a presentation, yeah.
Yeah, I remember the presentation, I remember.
There was a grid, yeah, me too, yeah.
But I don't remember the numbers, but.
So I think what would be helpful too is one of the things you spoke about was that there are some existing trees and there are some places where it wasn't, it wasn't appropriate to have trees. So if, if you could, I mean, the presentations, like we were saying earlier, won't become part of the reference documents. So we need to capture the data that's in the presentations that either supplements or changes the documents that you've already submitted to us so that we, we all are capturing what we think is being proposed.
Sure, the symbols are all in the submitted set.
But I think the symbols, you know, so what, I think we need quantities listed on the plans, not just symbols.
Well, we can, we can document that, yeah.
Yes, Rich?
Just a question.
The planning plan is, is designed to be unique to this property. It's not designed to be a subdivision.
Sure, I'll just touch on something you just referred, you just said.
Mm-hmm.
Because I was, I did not know this. So the presentations that we've been sort of reading and taking notes off of and relying on are not in the public record?
Well, they're in the public record, but they're, right now, they're not, they're not.
Captured and.
They're not part of.
Okay, I just wanted to make.
I thought they were.
I, I know they're not part of the special permit, as long as they're part of the record.
They're part of the record, but I'd like them to, whatever we understand it to be captured in the documents themselves.
I'm fine with that, too.
So that in the field, the landscape contractor understands what they're putting in. Because they're going to be going off of those plans, not off of the presentations.
Got it, got it. So I'm not a tree expert, and so to the last question, is there a difference that the shade tree or the town would consider? Like, do we look at those shade trees are better than ornamental type trees? And so if it's true that they are broken down, I mean, it sounds to me like there was more, so it sounded to me, it's great, we're getting more trees, but is there a good, better, it's better to have this tree than that tree and?
Well, you have.
I'm just curious, I'm not saying we should change anything, I'm just saying, what's the difference?
I guess my understanding from Alan's presentation is that we're, we're asking them to preserve and work around of.
I know why we're doing it, I'm just curious about the.
And to preserve certain view corridors and characteristics of the site that exist as of today. That that's.
Yeah, I'm not arguing in that.
I understand that's the reason that you had, you didn't want to do the regular.
That's not my question. Ornamental trees don't create, they're not shade trees. They're what, I'm sorry. They're not shade trees, they're pretty little balls of color and leaves.
At the front of the.
Along residences or whatever, they don't create tree canopy that's continuous. Do they last as long, do they? I don't know that, but I. I know why we were doing it and I get it and I agree fundamentally with the reason. I was just curious of like, again, I'm not, I don't, I don't understand what tree, what's better, what's a better tree than other?
I, I think the fundamental is that the, the town has rules and regulations for development of subdivisions that go back to the 1960s. And they deal with creating Indian cliffs, brand new subdivision, brand new subdivision roads and new individual home slots. And that requires, because it's basically clear cutting everything, you replant that.
Actually, they did leave a ton of trees, but go ahead.
And they probably left a lot of trees in right places, but there's also requirement you plant a tree every so far, because you have a 50-foot wide right of way for the roadway, and you, and sidewalks on both sides, and you plant trees so often. What we're suggesting here is we have a meandering roadway that's narrow, that's built within significant preserved open space, and that the trees ought to fit what's being developed. And so what Alan's done is come up with a plan that sort of sets a different combination of trees, so the views adjust as you move around, but provide for an equivalent or greater number of trees. Street trees, at the end of the day, plus 28 acres of preserved open space, mostly trees and other things. And that the trees, when they're planted, ought to fit within that broader context and not just be sort of a cookie cutter shell.
So with that.
Yeah, not fighting.
I think the other difference is.
It's an excellent question, and I'll tell you why.
The other difference is that the regulation is written for a street section where really, by and large, the only sort of oversight or role the town gets is at that moment when the street trees are planted. The lots are fee simple, and the homeowner can do whatever they want on the lot. Here, you have a lot more control. We've shown you typical planting plans, we've called out all the planting, we are representing and we will, you know, live by that plan, and the homeowners that buy into the project are expecting us to maintain that as we build out the project, so we.
Technically, we can't cut down shade trees, though.
Pardon?
We can't cut down shade trees on the side of the road. I don't think that's legal for us to cut down the trees that the town plants.
No, nobody says you're trying to cut them down. No, no, no. But that's the only, that's your only moment to, to get a tree in there.
Yeah, and so just to be clear. Those trees, in fact, are being planted within the right of way that's being conveyed to the town.
So just to be clear, I was not fighting, I get what you're doing, I actually like what you're doing. I specifically was just asking a very separated question of, I'm not a tree person, what's the difference between the trees? That's all my question is.
Okay, so I think because we don't have the plan in front of us, if I may, suggest that we be provided with a color copy of that plan, so all of us can look at it outside of the meeting, we come back and we look at what we think about the spacing. The other thing that maybe I'll suggest is, because you're looking for a variety, and I heard about succession, is it possible to change the caliper such that you're getting some larger caliper to address the idea that maybe it's not as many trees, but you're still, the investment in the trees gives you, you know, a larger caliber tree, gets you, you know, you're.
I, I think, you know, what, if we can think back to that plan now, if we subtract, say, say we have the linear footage of the road as X, which at 50-foot on center equals the 150-some trees, if you line out both sides of the, the road. And you do, you, the regulation asks us to apply that uniformly across a site, so that's the, the number of trees you want to plant. What we're showing as we highlight areas where we can't or don't want to plant, because we want to preserve an open meadow, we want it, we don't want to plant under an existing overhanging canopy, or plant around an existing tree that we're preserving, we're planting along a lot less frontage, but we're still exceeding the count. So in order to plant that much along less roadway, we need a variety of sizes, and we need a variety of plants that mature at different heights. So we're going to have plants, the, the oaks, the maples, that are going to achieve a much greater height than a flowering crab or another species, but in combination, it creates that, that character that we, we want to achieve, which we, it's a, it's a interesting streetscape, it creates front yards, side yard areas for homes that, you know, feature the architecture, create a sense of, of privacy. So I think, you know, as we think back and forth between what we're proposing and the reason for the underlying zoning, and how we're working back and forth between the two, I hope it, I, I think it holds up.
Yes, Rich?
Just, not to belabor my point, but I'm going to, anyway, I feel like, just want to put some context, the reason why I was asking those questions. So a neighbor or a citizen came up and had a question or concern, and, and I understand everything that you're saying, and I hear you, but the only way me, eye on the board can hear that concern and see all sides of it is to understand a little bit more about, asking some more questions.
Sure.
Get why you're doing it, but there's a concern, so I don't think we're doing our job unless we listen to it.
So the plan, sorry, you might have been.
You go ahead.
So the plan that I requested, that you submit and have color on it, can you add some dimensions on the spacing of the trees where you do have them, so we don't have to try and scale and get an idea, as the Shade Tree Advisory Committee did? Because this is one of the things that I think the plan is going, is going to be the controlling kind of feature rather than descriptions, and I think until we get it all on a plan and we all are comfortable with it, we see, once you see what the spacing is relative to the other things, because otherwise, we're just going to keep talking about it, and the plan is going to document it. So can you get us that plan a week before our next meeting, which means in one week, your revised plans, your revised painting plans?
Yeah, I mean, we've had it since September, so.
But it doesn't have the dimensions, and it doesn't have the color coding that you showed us in our presentation, right?
Right, but I'm saying we're not trying to, you know, we're not, you know, pulling stuff out of the air here, it's been, it's been alive here from the beginning.
Agreed, but where we're trying to get to some closure on things, I think we, we've talked about things, and we need to get the updated documents so that we're all comfortable, that we're all on the same page with the things that are raised as issues.
It's just a little due diligence.
Yeah.
To make the neighbors happy.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's an important question that you're asking, because we need to, when we approve a waiver, we need to say it's in the public good. So we need to, so that's why the street tree number would help you say, well, it's, it's not the exact number, but it compensates this way, or it is the exact number, but it's in a different placing, or whatever. So that's why it's important, and that's, so that, so I just wanted to know, I thought that was a good question.
And it made sense when you gave your presentation.
Yeah.
So if you can just, and the color coding helps a lot, you know, what's an existing tree, what's a new shade tree, what's a new ornamental, what's a new evergreen?
Right.
So.
Right, so it should all be on the town site, the PowerPoint as well, so if any that, if you want to.
Look at it in the meantime.
Look at the live, you know, PowerPoint with different layers popping on with the animation, it is there, so.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Anything else on the Shade Tree Advisory Committee comments?
I just want to say thank you to them.
Yes.
It was incredibly informative, and it's very, very helpful.
All of you.
Yep.
Thank you.
And thanks for, thanks for coming, and thanks for being patient at other times at other meetings, and thanks for watching the last meeting.
Good night, thank you.
All right, so let's talk about the historical, you had a meeting last night, some were able to attend and some not, right, in the, with the historical commission, and you have some information you want to convey to us, right?
Yes, and I have a, a one plant sheet plan, I think that will help illustrate it. So Jack Dolly met last evening with a majority of the, of the historical commission, there were a number of, who were not there, and I know that several of them are here tonight. And I've spoken individually with, with two of them, but we, one of the fundamental issues, difficult issue that we've been dealing with for a while, is whether or not and how to save the carriage barn, which is an additional building that the, that the historical commission has recommended that we save, and that we have steadfastly refused to do so. We received a out of the blue compelling offer to settle a whole range of disputes with Kevin Walker, that we're very close to signing, and which includes a resolution for the, for the carriage barn. There's a lot in it that is not able to discuss, but fundamentally, there were, there are a couple of issues that have been important to Mr. Walker, deal specifically with the perceived impacts of this project on his property. Some don't realize that he has invested a significant amount of money in an equestrian facility. He's got barns, he's got show horses, he takes back and forth to Florida, I believe. He's got a paddock that he's built, and he sees the carriage barn as an opportunity to acquire, I think, a historic barn that's been on the property, was used as a carriage barn, and he sees the opportunity to use it for the same purpose. And he has requested that we convey him the carriage barn, he's in the construction business, and his plan is to move it to a piece of property that is adjacent to his existing property, which would be conveyed to him as part of the settlement. And we're, we think it's a great idea, we think it's an artful way to solve what is a, otherwise a, a difficult issue, and we would, and we presented it to the historical commission last night, hoping that they would recommend to the board that this is a good outcome, and that we would ask the board to accept this outcome and agree to condition the special permit on that transfer. There is a, other things, he's part of that, is it, so, basic description, this is the plan, this is a portion of his property, his house is here. The other major issue is that, you know, his property is served by an easement off of the existing driveway that serves the Walcott residence. And the plan has been to, to cut off that driveway and infill this with trees and whatnot, preserving this as his driveway, but he's, but it's been a very important consideration for him, that he have that unlimited access to that, and easement over that driveway, without anybody else's ability to interfere with it. And so, there are two components here, so he, this is his house, he's got a large barn structure here, there's a big riding paddock that's down here. This is a one-acre piece of property that's outlined in blue, that we would convey to him in fee simple. We would need an A and R plan endorsed by this board, but we'd convey that one acre to, to him. His, this is the spurred, the driveway that goes up into his property, his room here to move the barn, and paying attention to the side back, side yard setback requirements under the zoning, 15-foot setbacks, which we learned all about tonight earlier, as an accessory structure that would be required 15 feet, and he would move the barn over to this location. There is an exclusive driveway easement that would be granted to him down below, and then if you can just move that up a little bit. There's a bit of a retained easement over the driveway entry in, the easement goes to him with the retain, retained rights to maintain the sewer line that's going to connect out and into Canton Avenue, and access for periodic maintenance of the stormwater detention basin, and, you know, the open space. That's the, that's the plan, it's very simple, it resolves, the idea is if it, if this board will accept this, and the conveyance can be made, it resolves all outstanding issues. The litigation against the town would be dismissed, and, you know, no further appeals. And so that's the, that's the premise, that's the outline, we think, it, it came to us about three weeks ago in conversations with his lawyer, and it was, it's Kevin Walker's idea, it's, it's a, it's pretty incredible, but it's a great, and I think, artful way to resolve what, what has been a really difficult issue for us and, and the historical commission and presumably the board.
So you had discussions with the historic, or the team had discussions with the historical commission last night?
So this was presented last night to the members of the historical commission who were present, I know that Ellen Anzalone and a couple of others were not there last night, I met, I showed them the plan this evening, don't know what their, ultimately what their comments are, you know, we've.
So can we, at this point, can we ask the historical commission, whoever would like to come up to the table?
I've just been pointed to, I guess. And I was there. Hi, Kathy Keyes, historical commission, and Ellen Anzalone, and Linda Weld are also here tonight with us. So we did get to talk with Northland last, last night, and he briefly showed us the, what you see up on the screen right now. Only having received this information last night, while it sounds interesting and it's a step forward in the right direction, we as a board haven't taken a formal position yet. We're going to convene on, reconvene on March 27th on this issue, and talk hopefully with more members present. We made a quorum, but it was four of us, and there's seven of us, so we want three more to step in and at least see this, talk about it, kick it around, and maybe there'll be more information as to the whole plan and the care and discussion about moving and how it's moved, and you, you might want to talk about trees and grass and what's going on with the moving of the carriage house, I mean, hopefully it'll go down the driveway and down the street and up a driveway, or they're coming across the lawn, or what have you. What's that?
We have to clear a path.
You're coming across the lawn?
Coming across, not across the lawn.
Okay.
Through the trees?
Coming across the driveway and down to the driveway.
Okay, so, so there was a lot of details we just didn't have last night, and so that's, that's.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, there are no more details that can be forthcoming because of the nature of the settlement.
When you have time.
Yeah, well, because the two sides haven't finished it, right?
You're still working on the agreement?
There will never be more detail coming, because the, the agreement itself is going to be substantially confidential in a lot of ways. All we can say is that he's going to pick up and move the barn, we have to create a pathway for him to move it, and he's going to move it. What he does with it, how he restores it, we don't know.
So in case this falls through, there's, again, there's no vote on our end yet, so I mean, we don't know if this is going through completely, there's nothing signed by either side right now, right?
No, and if, so if, so let's back up, if the vote is no, then presumably the settlement agreement is off.
Are you asking for a vote tonight?
We're asking for a vote, we'd love to get a vote of this board tonight.
So the.
If you need to wait until the 28th because you're not comfortable, we can wait until the 28th.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable, I want to hear more from the historical.
I got a quick question. I'm sorry, just to, I mean, not into the weeds, but a high level question. One thing, I mean, maybe you can't talk about it, but, and not to pick on any sentence that you said, but, and I'll paraphrase, I'm not, not word for word, but you mentioned that he was, you know, Kevin Walker was seemingly interested in dropping anything that he was concerned about. So I've been working on this, you know, year, obviously I spent more time with the work committee, but I, and I could be wrong, but in the past year, I've never heard of any complaints there? Or there were some, but most of his complaints were throughout the project, and so I guess my concern is, if he had concerns in other areas, why are they no longer concerns because there's this project coming up?
He's, fundamentally, he has a lawsuit pending against the town.
Okay.
Challenging the validity of this zoning.
For a number of issues, right? Or is it just specific?
It's the validity of the zoning.
The validity of the zoning.
Okay.
That passed town meeting.
All right.
If, if a special permit is granted, he's going to appeal a special permit.
Right.
That means nothing happens until the other end of whatever the litigation is on those two issues, which could be a year, three years, five years from now.
Yeah, and I'm not saying this is a bad deal, I'm just saying, I find it interesting that like, yeah, I'm just, that's what's in the back of my head.
Yeah.
He's been, I mean, we've been reading a lot of materials about.
Understood.
And I've invested a lot of time into things that didn't have anything to do with this, and I find it concerning that everything's going away, it sounds wonderful.
But they're, they're working through issues, you.
No, they're gone.
So I think.
No, if, if the settlement.
His lawyer is working with his lawyer, they're working through issues, and this is a big part of the settlement.
No, but some of his issues were that they didn't like that we were changing some of the, the setback, the things, the waivers that we're doing, so.
Right.
They're not handling the waivers, we're handling the waivers.
Well, let's, let's, let's parse all that.
Yeah.
He has raised particular issues along the way, it's part of his concerns about this, his motivation for raising them, or his motivation for raising them. This is a global settlement. If this is approved, and we settle overall with Mr. Walker, he withdraws, the, the litigation is withdrawn, there are no further appeals, no further challenges, it goes away. It goes away.
So, to that point, mindful of Kathy sitting here in Historical, but just on this particular point.
It's just a general irritation.
Any of the, any of the issues that he raised, if the board feels as if are valid and wants to address, we, we can address. It has nothing to do with whether that, their settlement takes them off of his concern.
No, I'm sorry, it's a general irritation, I guess, just because it seems like, because you're getting something here, I won't complain about things that maybe, I don't want to say this is what they were thinking, but maybe I wasn't really concerned with them. I was just raising concerns to raise concerns. I have issue with that.
So, I, I guess what I'd like to be able to do is give both the, the team and the Historical Commission some sense of, well, we think we don't have to take a vote on it, obviously. But one of the things that I think that we've had to consider and sort of see, I see as a challenge is that the zoning only requires the retention of three structures. And so, respectful of the Historical Commission's position on the building has meant that we've asked the applicant to look at alternative site plans and can they shift things around. We've looked at the fact that that starts to crowd some buildings and it starts to take away some more trees. And so, we, we have to balance all of those things out and decide as a board, you know, because that final authority lies with us in terms of, you know, do we want to approve the plan that's been submitted to us, which doesn't retain that building? Or do we want to suggest to the applicant that we won't approve it if they don't retain it? And what we've been doing is kicking it down the road for a long time because we've been considering what these, you know, what the alternatives mean. And we're getting close to a point where we're at the end of our discussions. And if we, if we make, if, if we give some indication that this is a good direction, at least we'll, we'll begin to see that they're not going to go back and have to do a reengineering and a redesign. So, I'd like, I guess my sense, and I'll give my opinion first and then you folks can think about whether you want to give an opinion. I, I kind of see this as a compromise where it, it helps the board address the concerns of the Historical Commission. And it also helps preserve some other things that are beneficial about the site plan. So, I, I would say that I'd like the Historical Commission to give consideration to it as, as a nice compromise, so.
Well, I'm, I'm only prepared to say that we were saying that it was favorable in the direction and that our full board hasn't discussed it and that's all I can say.
No, that's all right. And that's all right. I just want to give you some feedback too, that you could take back and give, and, and again, I don't, not asking for us to take a vote here either, but if each board member wants to get, if you're prepared to give any comment, yes, Brian? And, or April, either one, whoever wants to raise.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I, if there's a way to preserve this building that makes the Conservation Commission happy.
I mean, the Historical.
I mean, I'm sorry, yes, Historical Commission, sorry. Sorry, Kathy. And makes Mr. Walker happy and it can be reused in a way that satisfies you, I think that's great. I don't have any context whatsoever for moving an historic building and what you would want to see. And I don't know if Ned's explanation of getting no further information is sufficient. I honestly don't know. But if there's a way to work it out, I think this is a great solution.
Brian, I'm sorry.
There's a lot of things, I mean, the whole moving down the driveway and all this. I don't know if that's even feasible, I have no idea. So, I would be looking to you and maybe you to tell us how that's going to work so that everybody's happy, but if it can work out, great.
Yes, Brian?
So, great potential solution. But my concern is, I understand that settlements are confidential, I get that. The zoning makes a large swath of the perimeter of this site untouchable. I don't know how you move that building without clear cutting a huge path of trees. So, to say there's not going to be any detail, that's a problem because I don't, we have spent so much time, including an hour, more than an hour tonight, talking about trees. And then you just came up and basically said they're going to clear cut the trees.
Oh, no, no, we're not, we're not clear cutting.
Well, they're clear cutting the path.
Well, they're going to use the existing driveway.
There is an existing driveway, so I agree with that. So, we will need details to the extent that practical, or we're going to, or otherwise, we're going to have a condition and they're saying, you got to use the existing driveway, figure it out. That's all I'm saying.
That's fine.
Because the trees are, this is an untouchable area. So, using the existing driveway, great solution.
We've, we've known, as we've been working on this, that this solution has to work in the context of the rest of the site.
Of the zoning.
We can only give away one acre because zoning says we need to retain 46 acres. We have 47 and a little bit more. We have to pay attention to setbacks. We have to pay attention to the not, maintaining non-disturbance zone area. We have to pay attention to, you know, all of those things. And we have to, we've been very careful in as we've been crafting this thing to make sure that we're not tripping over other elements of the bylaw.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So. Your point's well taken relative to making sure the pathway works, but.
So, my earlier irritations aside, I, I agree. I mean, this, this sounds like it could work, but my, my comment was going to be very similar to Brian's in that we just, we've spent a lot of days talking about the entire perimeter of this. And, and, you know, I'll represent it this way. It seems like there's going to be a section that is going to be exempt from that. And so, my questions will be, what can we do to make sure that there are protections in there for the comment about moving it? But I'll have a further question of, no, I can't see the entire thing and, and see the setbacks. But there's obviously setbacks on where you can build representative to other people. That's that, so you're not building.
Can you scroll up again? I think some of that will be.
So, you're not touching any.
So, this is the 175 foot setback line between property line and new building. And this is 125 foot setback between property line and new roadway. Doesn't apply here.
Okay.
So, there's a 75 foot non-disturbance on the sides. So, that's in here. And there's no disturbance that would happen. This is the existing driveway that needs to get filled in.
So, you would come down that existing driveway rather than take anything else out in terms of trees?
We have to come, we have to take out, there's an old garage next to the Walcott.
Lots of small pieces.
There's an old garage, the existing garage at the Walcott house.
So, you answered that piece, I just don't want to go too far, just to finish up my thoughts. If, as long as there is nothing there that changes what we've been talking about and there are protections in there, because I agree, I mean, that's going to be pretty big. I mean, this actually pushes the non-disturbance line way further into the site. But the other thing. But it looks like we didn't hit anything. But the other thing is. We aren't close on one of the. But that, to the other point I made, I mean, we do have lots of documents that we had to have prepared in, to go and explain every other Kevin Walker thought that he's had. And I think some of them are good. And I, we're, I think we're all getting prepared to show that we've satisfied his requirements. And I just take a little bit of exception that they're all gone, so. We can still do those things. It's all still part of the public record.
Yeah, I would say that, that's right. Anything that's been suggested in the public comment that you agree with is appropriate and.
I think we still have to address all of those things. Because they're on the public record. I agree, and I think we largely have. I just. I agree. It's, yeah.
Yeah, one of the things that I just wanted to point out too, is having been on the board when we crafted the zoning, is that the original plan that was presented to us had a narrower buffer zone there. And it was widened on this side to address Mr. Walker's concerns.
Sure.
So, that Mr. Walker's actually proposing having a structure there that gives him a buffer within what was otherwise not going to be, you know, touched, is, is like he's requesting it. It's not like there's an imposition on their part or on our part or anything. So, by his request, I'm, I guess I take that is that that's his desire, right? So, we put it in before as a buffer, as a landscape buffer at his desire. And now he's asking us to consider the carriage barn in his desire. You know, so it's, you know, the fact that it can be retained generally on the site, I think, is.
You don't know that.
We, well, we think it can. I think the other point that would be important is that, as we understand it, his desire is to retain it in its historic context, which is.
But there'll be no agreement on that.
No, there's no specific agreement as to what and how he, what he does with it. It can't be a, you know, there are zoning limitations on what he can do with it.
No, but he could buy it, move it and tear it down.
I think if, if this board said that we wanted to have.
No, I get it, but the Historical Commission should think.
But, you know, he's.
I think we could talk to town council about conditions.
All right.
The extent, the extent that he's, the extent that, that he's going to spend, be spending a significant amount of money to pick it up and move it. And then build a foundation for it and place it on that foundation and then restore it is pretty significant. And his intent, as I understand it, is to use it in its original use, which was as a barn. It has been a, it has converted to a dwelling in the 1990s in artfully. And the uses that are being suggested that we should take on in its existing condition is to turn it into a dwelling, bastardize it and, because we want to save the building. This, his plan actually does more to preserve the original context, the historical context of the use of that building than what anything might come out of this board relative to requirements to preserve the building in its current location.
Brian?
I do have a question. I'd like to have the Historical Commission and probably Lauren, John Flynnway and on prior to the 28th, which is, if this building is moved and assuming it's, it's still a historical structure, just in a different location, Suffolk Resolves House and other buildings in Milton, will it still have a demolition delay protection over it for two years under Milton's laws? So, that's, that would just be something we'd like to, I'd like to have put into the record on the 28th, whether or not that's the case.
I believe that, my own opinion, having had several other matters similar to that come before the Historical Commission, is that that would be.
That would be my expectation.
Meaning the storage would be subject to the two year, it would be subject to the process leading to a two-year demolition delay.
Yeah, I'd just like the town council to weigh in on that, please.
Okay. Lauren, you took note and you'll reach out? I guess I, Lauren, either you or I can reach out to him also about, I want to understand conditions, because if, if, if it's something that we don't have any details on, how do we know how binding it is? And we agreed to a site plan and then something falls through. I think to, to the, to the points that have been raised, I, I like the idea, but I do think we need some assurances about how it's, all of a sudden, we have no role in it whatsoever and our approvals are based on something that's gone now.
Did you, Ellen Marion?
Ellen, yes, please, and Linda, come to the tables and give us your names, please.
Ellen Anzalone, and I just, I've been involved in moving buildings before. So, I would suggest, and I don't know if you can legally do this, is ask for a schematic plan on how they're going to move this. Because it is, as Brian's saying, it's a huge swath of land that it's going to come through. And are they going to take pieces of the building off so they can move it? And it's just, it's basic information that a moving company can give them. So, it's not, he doesn't have to go dive too deep into it. But then at least there's something that people can comment on.
Great, thank you, Ellen.
Cheryl, yeah, I'm sorry. The other, the other.
Any other, I'm sorry, Brian, one more, anything else, Ellen?
No.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Brian?
You know, one thought to, to address what your concern is, is whether or not you could, you could suggest that, that the preservation of that building is a condition of the final.
Conveyance or whatever.
And, and that would probably require the two parties to work together to move the building and put it in place and whatnot. So, just, just a thought, I'm just, because it's, it's a good point. I don't know how you.
Are we talking to John Flynn anyway?
Issue a special permit and then agree to have the building be gone and then it just disappears.
I understand also because of the.
Good intentions, but.
Of the, of the challenge to the zoning, that John Flynn's part of the conversation anyway. So, I think that's something that we should definitely talk to him about.
If it would fall through, you'd still have the two-year demolition delay and.
Yeah, but your special permit's granted at that point.
Your special permit's granted at that point and we.
Understood. We, the whole separate issues around what happens if you vote to require its retention on site and whether or not the appeal, the, the, the special permit would be appealed.
Yep.
On our end, so.
Yep.
Understood.
So.
Yes, April?
So, can I ask that you work with them to try to work out some of these details for the 27th?
I will work to the extent that we are able to provide additional details, we'll, we'll do that. I'll have those conversations with his council.
It seems as if a schematic of how you would move it would help.
We do, one of the exhibits in the agreement is going to be a schematic. So, we can work on providing.
I'm worried about the beach trees.
You know, that.
I mean, as, as much as this is an arrangement that Mr. Walker's working out, it's also not something that the board, it has to be bound to. So, I think we and the Historical Commission have a right to see additional information.
To the extent that we can get you that additional information, we will. And certainly you're asking a lot of good questions and we'll answer them to the extent that we can.
So, I'm sorry.
No, just going to say.
I just skipped over you. Do we have a Google Earth map? Because it's going right on top of trees.
That's what I was just looking at on my phone.
Can you call it up, Lauren?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Wow, this is cool.
Is the house going right over the driveway?
I know. Awesome.
I pro, I think it's.
So.
You can just move it around on there.
Coming right down to the driveway.
While you're calling Google up.
It's going right down. 1776.
While you're looking that up, there were other issues that have been brought up. We've gotten comments from the Historical Commission several times in writing.
Well, wait a minute.
So, did you talk through last night those lists? And have you come to an agreement that you will agree with the request that they've made?
We think, we think we've, we think we have otherwise agreed substantially at all, but there are series, there's like four documents that go back and forth. So, what we've proposed is that we would have consolidated document to present to them for the 27th. And then have that, because it should be, you know, in the special permit, there should be a, an exhibit that references.
Right. There shouldn't be six documents back and forth of comments.
Correct, it should be one document.
One final document, right.
And that, and that would be an exhibit.
So, if we can have that to review on our meeting on the 28th, that would be great.
Is that it right there?
That's, so, this is Canton Avenue.
Yep.
This is, this is his, that driveway that comes in. This is the Walcott up here. So, this is reversed from where you would otherwise be used to looking at it. Oh, here we go.
We're not creative thinkers.
There we go.
We need the same orientation we've always seen.
That's right.
Don't throw things out.
That was good, that's good.
So, here's Canton Avenue. This is the middle driveway. This is the existing driveway that comes in off of Canton Avenue up to the Walcott Manor. And this is, there's a spur that comes into his property. This is his property here. There's a, you know, he's got a paddock. This is an older image, but there's a riding paddock here. He's got a barn here, his house is here. And the, the carriage house barn is right up in here. So, there's a clear path that comes through to a point. There's an old garage that services the Walcott dwelling residents. That's the barn, I think.
That's the barn.
Yeah, that's it.
And so, there's, and there are trees in this area that are coming out for the new roadway. And the new, all of these trees are coming out in here because this is where the Walcott cluster is located. And so, the, we have to clear that path and make sure there's room to come down this driveway here. And if you can go up just a tad.
Up this way?
No, the other way.
The other way towards the Walker house.
The driveway spur into the Walk, into the Walker property is here. Location of the new barn would be right there. So, come straight down around the, the Walcott house, down the existing driveway and plant it here on a new foundation. He's got a secure foundation permit, building permit from the building commissioner. Our obligation will be to create the path so that it, there's a substantial enough pathway for, you know, a, a big wide flat bed with a house sitting, with a barn on it, to come down slowly down that driveway. And there are timing, there's timing built into the when and what, but that's the, that's the current.
So, I'm concerned about the historic beach, beach trees in that area. So, anything you can do to tell us about that at the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, drafting wise, we're going to just basically, I think we're going to rely to rely on the fact that they can't touch anything. They're going to have to figure out how to use that roadway.
Yeah.
And the bigger issue is how do we...
How do you know?
Protect that building.
Well, that's what I was going to say.
So I think Cheryl's identified the bigger issue, right? If they're, if they can only use that roadway, that's their problem, they got to figure it out, right? But how do, how do we draft to protect the building so that, because they're not going to get a building, none of this is going to happen for two years.
No. The timing of this is like...
Well, certainly not going to happen in 30 days when we're trying to get this hearing wrapped up.
Right, right, right.
You're not going to have a building permit and, so we're going to have to go through an A and R, all that kind of stuff.
If, well, so here's part of the plan, is that we have runway, but we would propose to submit an amended site plan that would carve that one acre off, show all the new calculations, the new setbacks. It's, the only change to the site plan is, in that area, is just redrawing the boundaries. It's not very complicated. And we will prepare a draft of an A and R plan that would be reviewed and approved at the same time that the special permit is granted. So the special permit would be granted on the 46-acre plan with an A and R plan that would be, would be adopted. The A and R plan would be placed in escrow pending appeal periods, closing, et cetera. You know, property can't be conveyed until Jack has acquired it from the Carberries, because the Carberry owns all of that half of the property. They can't acquire it until the special permit's been granted, 20-day appeal period's been done, Jack's got his financing in place. There's lots of process to go through, but the goal is that the physical activity happens as quickly as possible after those, that timeframe.
So what I've heard from this board is that we're seeing fine with this plan if you can compel the Historical Commission to agree with it and you can give us some demonstration that the building will be preserved satisfactorily to them and then to us. So that's your job come back next time.
And, right, and without taking down the beech trees or the significant tree.
Yeah. The good news is, if they're trying to do it fast, then there's no reason you can't say you're not going to get your COs until this thing is on the foundation it's supposed to be on in accordance with what you've told us. And if it's, if something happens, then they're going to have to come back and modify the site plan.
Okay.
Or modify the, modify the special permit.
I mean, I'm excited about this solution.
Me too.
I hope we can work it out.
I think it's great, I think it's a draft around.
Okay, so let's move on then. Unless there's anything else the Historical Commission wanted to have us address.
So Historical will deliver a...
I'm sorry, one second, Brian.
Well, I was just going to say that unless there's an agreement that Walker will preserve it for some period of time, all it does is get the building off the site, because then he can immediately submit a demolition permit application.
So maybe he would be willing, maybe he would be willing to...
I will speak to his counsel about, about that. I mean, he...
Because otherwise, it just gets the building off the site and we don't have any guarantee that that does anything for the building.
That's the concern that we have too. We share that concern.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kathy, also.
So Historic is going to come back to us hopefully with a letter, a one, you know, one document with all of their outstanding items or all of their agreements for the 28th, hopefully?
I think it's going to be a document that actually, that the applicant should say this is what they're going to do and it is supported or endorsed by the Historical Commission.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, now, we have some other topics we wanted to discuss.
Yes, we have, if you want to go to what Ellen sent you.
Six or seven-page PDF.
We've got a small set of slides that are responsive to some of the issues that we heard recently.
Is this the...
Yep, that one, yep.
Is there a full screen option?
Do I need to kill the lights?
Yeah. So this is the, so in the discussion last week, we talked about the construction management plan and none of us had it at our fingertips to call up. In the submitted set, it is that four-page breakdown.
I got one.
Yep. I'll take the clicker, though.
Sure. Could you pass that, please?
So we had Deb take the four sheets and put it on one sheet for reference, and we've submitted this as well in a sort of true clean PDF that degraded a little bit when we combined it with the other sheets that we'll show you. But to talk about what we were talking about, just gesticulating last week, outlined in blue here, phase one, phase two, three, and then four, across the brook. The, each area, again, it's tough at the full-size sheet, but breaks down where we have erosion control and tree protection fencing materials...
Can you zoom in on that?
Yes.
Please.
Materials, stockpiling areas, so there's numerous spots in these oval zones in each zone, the rectangular boxes, staging, parking areas in each zone, and then the callouts for the different sorts of protections and prohibitions against the sorts of activities that Denny was asking about beyond those limits of work and fencing are established there. You'll also see between zones, these different, in the roadway, those represent the tracking controls so that when we're paved here, we're starting to clear and begin foundation and site work up here, truck tires lose the dirt before they continue on out of the site. So all those sorts of construction management, fencing, staging, parking, or layout.
What's the timing of the other outbuildings being demolished?
I would have to rely on Jack for that. I think it depends on which. I know if you scoot over across the intermittent stream, there's a, that first cottage up here, I believe Northland may be using that already as sort of a field office. So a building like that would stay for an awfully long time. And some of the other buildings, like the Red Farm House, I believe, has been vacant for quite some time, so its condition is, is poor. But Jack would have, Northland would have to apply for the demolition permit. And I'm not sure if you've talked with him about that specifically, about timing on...
I don't know that, I don't, I don't know the timing.
Well, the reason for asking is that, you know, your staging and your construction parking could take advantage of some of those existing driveways and even if you took the buildings down and you had the pads of where they were...
Right.
So that, to Denny's point of not going beyond what's already kind of established, because, you know, you're going to need staging for not just soil, but all the building materials and the construction equipment, you know, get several backhoes in there and all kinds of things. Big equipment like that takes up a lot of room fast.
Right.
And I've been at also the Pulte, the Old Town Farm property, a number of times and have been really wowed by how much all that has taken up. It's, they've got most of their infrastructure in now, so, but when they were doing it, it was, it took up a ton of space. And so just, I mean, what you outlined here seems pretty small to me, you know, in terms of how much would be necessary. Even when you're doing the roadway, you know, all the rock, all the submaterials, all the pipe that's going in there, I mean, it's just lots of material. And to, so...
You know, if you think, if you think about this in the context of Woodmere, I was thinking about this, Woodmere was 13 new buildings, 36 units on eight acres, fairly tight site. You know, that site was managed one section at a time, lots of activity, nobody noticed it.
But I went through there when it was under construction and there wasn't fencing that went out to the full tree canopy and there was stuff stored right next to the trunks of big trees.
Point taken, yep.
And there were big stockpiles of soil next to trunks of trees and that's a ton of weight. And I'm not trying to go backwards on Woodmere, it was a tight site and this is big, but still contractors will be contractors and, you know, all of the best-laid plans, even, I do think that Jack and his company are mindful of these things, but if, if somebody's not there keeping that fenced off, saying you're not parking there, you know, on tight sites, you know, you have to come up with a plan to get people to the site, they park remotely. I mean, I don't know, this is just, I think more thought, not that somebody hasn't thought about it, but I do think, I'm a little skeptical that there's enough areas allocated towards it on that plan. And then, you know, those trees, you can try and have the damage be minimized, but once they're, all that stuff's loaded up next to them, it's tough.
We've understood that we've given ourselves a tight window with preserving as much of the site as we have and trying to really keep ourselves tight within the development zone. So it is, you know, self-imposed and there's every motivation, you know, within this, within the permit and our work with you and our terms of operation that we need to stick to that, so.
Yeah. I mean, some of the areas, we're taking on a few of them next to one another, act in that upper right quadrant, but where you're keeping trees and you're working around an existing structure, that's the part, those are the ones that concern me the most. Because keeping those and keeping, because it's such a part of what you've tried to preserve, it's really easy to lose them in the, if people aren't truly minding the shop on it.
And the challenge is if you bury a tree's roots, you, like a huge beech tree, it will die five years later. So it looks healthy now, but...
So on the, I'm not sure, I recall on other special permits, does the building commissioner review the fencing and the protection of the trees before any other work begins?
I don't want to answer that.
You're going to, you're going to speak to him anyway, right, on another matter? Can you ask him about that?
And you know how they're supposed, the tree expert that you had in, was it a tree expert or a landscape expert?
Tree expert, yep.
It was a tree expert. Okay, well, she said there would be periodic, should we ask them to check back with us periodically or check back with Prondak? Should there be like reports or something?
Yeah, to say they were going to do like...
Because, see, that's, that's...
Diannal reports or something.
That's what goes wrong, is that like, I mean...
Maybe we can express our concerns to Joe Prondak and see what he suggests from an enforcement perspective.
Right. Okay, I, we need something, because I can...
But I do think that you're right.
We need something, because I can...
Inspection should be part, should be submitted to the town.
I would like to do a Pulte update. I have some pictures and stuff I wanted to show you guys maybe at the next meeting. I think it would help us in this process, because...
Do you need to send them to Lauren's?
Oh, sure, I could send them to Lauren, but...
Okay. I mean, you want to be able to project them, right?
Yeah.
Okay. On this, on this construction management?
Yeah, just a kind of an update. We should have a Pulte update anyway, shouldn't we? We're going to have a Pulte update to do the homeowners association next week agreement, so this would be in addition to that.
All right, so is there, in terms of that, do you want to have Lauren speak to Joe about how his enforcement has been on that plan?
Sure.
That'd be good.
You know what, I can even, you know what, I'll stop by and I'll show Joe the pictures
of my concerns and then we can...
Maybe specifically what he would like to see added to help him out in the future.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes I think also, we, like on the special permits, we, we put certain requirements in and that he, we've asked him to review some of them to weigh in on it. And I think now's a good time to have, to have him weigh in on the construction management, knowing our, what our concerns are.
Mm-hmm. Because we need, that's great, it's perfect.
All right, so we also supplied for this meeting red line of the narrative of the construction management requirements.
Okay, so you, we have that, Lauren?
Yes. Excuse me, she was asking you.
Sorry.
I know he sensed it.
CMP.
Yes, I did not bring paper copies. I was told by the applicant that he would bring paper copies tonight, so...
Jack.
Yes.
All right, so you can put it...
But you've given us some more, you've given us some more ready to add tonight, so. To characterize those, we did add the requirement to sign at hemlock...
Thank you.
During the duration of construction.
Thank you.
So no vehicular circulation through there with trucks. The, some issues of work hours that were previously incorrect or unfilled in are now filled in. Further clarifications throughout on parking controls under trees and in those areas to be policed and prevented. So that's sort of reiterated throughout more strongly than it was in the past. We added the pest and the additional language for the demolition management. And we provided an update...
To the timeline.
To the timeline. Oh, and then the one additional one, moving back to Historic, the additional protections, I believe Cheryl, you had asked for...
Right.
To preserve the buildings should they be fallate in the timing.
And did you add something on the foundation section about any significant change in the final grading plan?
I don't know, that was in this document, I think that was going to be...
You have that in the...
That's in a, that's in a draft of the special permit.
So then we also updated the timeline since when this was first produced.
Alan, before you do that, can I, can I have you go back to site development phase?
Mm-hmm.
On the site develop, it says, think of this, second to the last sentence is, this is about the protective fencing around the trees. It says, "This fencing will be inspected on a regular basis in order to ensure maximum tree protection." But who's inspecting it and what are they doing? It's on, it's in the construction phase, right there, this second to last sentence that says, "This fencing." See it on the bottom there?
On a regular basis.
It'll be inspected on a regular basis. So who's doing the inspecting?
Do we need an agent?
An arbiter or someone?
Arbiter. We can add the arbiter.
Okay, let's make, by the arbiter?
Yes.
Didn't they mention during that part that they were going to be coming out routinely to check this?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we should, so.
Get it in here, right? Okay.
And then, so tonight we heard adding, I have it written down...
Reference to TMP.
Reference to the TMP. And then in the schedule, you're interested in knowing more about the demolition piece.
Well, in part, because I think you can use those areas for parking and/or staging, so to put less, and you can use them for as many stages until you get to that part of the property, right?
Yep.
Or phases, rather.
Cheryl, has Prondak looked at this?
At the construction management plan?
Yeah.
I don't think so yet, right?
Be worthwhile, have them take a look at it before the 28th, just to see if there's anything that stands out to him.
So can you turn around another updated red line quickly and, and send that to Lauren?
Yes.
We also wanted to flag the term clearing or clear cutting.
Oh, for Joe.
For Joe Prondak, while you're at it. And that was in the construction management, I think.
And that was under, do you remember what section, Denny?
I don't remember what section, but I had it in my notes under that.
I can read it.
Okay. And then I, we had discussion about, I think we did have discussion about written direction provided to construction vehicle drivers, this, okay? Subcontractors and delivery trucks to enter site from Route 138 to Canton Avenue, leave site by turning left onto Canton Avenue. And then, did we talk about having it in secondary languages too? So in other words, if you're subcontractors or Spanish, provide the writing.
Oh, no, we did not.
Should we? Is that something we should?
Well, my experience in the construction crews, a lot are speaking Spanish and Portuguese, so...
Yeah, so just, if you have somebody on site anyway, just have, have that available. And then a sign, a sign will be on the site at all entry and exit points with these directions. We have that. So do we want that in different languages too? Because we don't want people showing up in Milton, like taking a right when they go out.
Yeah. Interesting.
Construction vehicles in the plan are limited to... Construction vehicles in the plan are limited to deliveries between 9:00 and 3:00. So they are specifically limited to happen after the morning commute and before the afternoon commute. Employees will be there from 7:00 to 3:00. That's the normal workday.
I don't know how I feel about this, Danny.
No?
Only because, I mean, where do you start and stop, right?
Oh, how many languages?
Portuguese, do you also incorporate Chinese and Japanese and because of the trade time for the tiles? And, I mean, it's just...
Well, I think we want...
Just don't know where you start and stop.
We want, okay.
I appreciate what you're doing. I'm worried that we'll hear, we'll actually get flack in the other direction for why we're not being more inclusive, so I'm just trying to think of how we...
Okay. Well, I guess we, the onus is on the person who's there to make sure that the people understand.
That's right.
So, okay.
Okay, so...
I think that rounds out the things that we're open on, the construction management. We've taken notes on what we've added tonight.
Right, so if we could get everything, well, get this to Lauren as soon as you can so that she can take all of the topics that we just spoke about, her speaking to the building commissioner about Joe Prondak, she can do it all at once.
So if we can go back to the, back to the PDFs.
You, we are fine with written direction being given to all the subcontractors, right? Which is not in different languages, okay.
Danny, I'm okay with the CMP being drafted. I just, I start to question it when we start putting it on road signs. I thought that's what you were suggesting.
Oh, so you're okay with them being...
I'm happy with the maintenance plan being in the proper language. I just don't know that you wanna...
Right.
I don't know that we wanna have road signs with 15 different languages on them.
Right, but I just wanted them to get, like, I want them to be instructed...
I'm fine with that.
Handout, I think.
No, I'm fine with that.
Okay, I mean, they know what language is their subcontractor's...
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay. Are you fine with that? Instructing, so if somebody speaks Spanish, let them know in Spanish not to take a right, to take a left to go down to 138.
I think so. I think that the bottom of the exit roadway, there's gonna be a sign that says, "Construction access."
Right. If you give a written handout, it should be provided in the appropriate language, I think, is the request.
That's the request. Thank you, Brian. Getting tired.
I've been on...
We gotta finish on time?
This construction site where you, they don't speak English. Can't even understand how they're reading the drawings, but anyway.
Yes, they're not.
Your son's...
Yes, I know.
Well, that's right, your son was, your son was sick last week and now he's...
All right, let's let, let's let them keep going here.
We just have like an hour left, I think?
Yeah. You might be right.
10 minutes. That was a good one.
I appreciate that.
So this is just a further update to what we looked at last week. We realized, and if you were looking really closely, we introduced a CD duplex combination, which we've, we never provided you in the unit combinations up to that point, up to this point, that combination. So our thought was either we get rid of it completely and, you know, update what we updated last week on that basis, or we use it more thoroughly. So we, there's two reasons behind this. So we took most of, we took out seven B units throughout the site and made them Cs or Ds, and that did a couple of things. One, it introduced a new sort of unit combination, so we have more variety. Two, it took out, if you really know your bedroom matrix chart, you'll know that we had two-bedroom and three-bedroom B units, which is confusing for marketing and people's expectations and just making sure that we don't go over a bedroom count at some point in the project because somebody was promised a three-bedroom B when it was supposed to be a two-bedroom B. So A units are, what, two-bedroom? B units are two-bedroom. Cs and Ds are all three-bedroom. The manor house units are two-bedroom units each. Devon's is a three-bedroom and Walcott House is a three-bedroom home. So that's 54 units, 160?
140.
140 bedrooms.
2.6 average.
So it gives us a 2.6 average. So if we map out, are you different, this is just the bedroom counts, only for the new units, 130 bedrooms, and then the duplex mix, excuse me, where we have BD and DB, if you reverse it on the street, breakdowns there, so that we're varying the elevations. This is what the DC or CD unit looks like and picks up the comment from last week about how would it look if we vary garage door style on the front.
I think that accomplishes the goal, Cheryl, don't you?
Yeah, and so does the fact that the roof lines are totally different for them. That, that gives, that definitely addresses it in my mind.
It does.
So there's the CB with two different style doors.
Yeah, it is.
And there's the sheet from a couple of weeks ago when we looked at, so there's our three, right? So DC, DB, and CB. So those are the three elevations.
So how many of those DBs do you have?
The DBs? Six.
Two, three, four, five, six, eight.
And then the reminder as well from, that's just the D, but...
That's just a lot less successful in my mind, that DB combo.
Agreed.
The DB.
Is it 'cause the garage doors are exactly the same?
And because the roof line's exactly the same, or it's hip and a gable, but they're still the same height, same proportion.
Right, so that's, that one is the same as, that one wasn't updated from when we presented it the last time. You can feed that back to Jim, but it's a, just the, the end elevations.
And that gives, that gives variety to the end. That's just the remaining one for me up there is the DB.
Just a lot of mass on the street. Just a lot of mass. Everything else looks very residentially scaled.
Yeah, it looks good. Yeah, very nice.
So we'll have Jim look at that again. And that was a quick hour.
Yeah.
Yay!
So before we all decided, I just want, we have this Lauren prepared.
Lauren prepared this?
Yes, and we don't, I don't know if we have a few minutes, you wanna go through it at all, but everybody, we're gonna go through it a little bit just to see your feedback, but then in the meantime, after, if in the next week there are other things, let's get them to Lauren so we can make sure that we've captured everybody's comments.
I'm not gonna go through everything now.
Yeah, me too.
Me too.
Exactly. So we have two weeks, but if there's anything, at least initially from your notes...
Yeah, but I just wanted to thank you to Lauren for this, because this is super helpful.
Yeah, this is really helpful.
That's great, yes.
We're last for it, so...
Yeah, it's really...
You did it, you did the work.
You did it, yes.
Exactly what we need to help guide us, I think.
With this list, it really just flagged some issues that have been raised by members or just that are decision points that need to be made. A lot of things in this list have been addressed tonight, like, there's a whole bunch of things with preservation that we've spoken about, even some of the things about architecture, but these are just some things that will need to be decided, they don't need to be decided tonight. I also, the original list of waivers that were requested regarding streets and laying out of ways have also included that. Some of these have been commented by our town engineer, favorable, he accepts them. And then there was also some other things that in the town engineer's mind, he thinks are really more of an aesthetic look and he would leave that to the planning board. So those are just things to keep in mind. As Cheryl said, if anybody has any things that they want added to this list, please let me know and I'll update it so we can have it for next time and make sure that everything is addressed.
Okay, so, and were there things you wanted to speak about tonight, Nether Allen, on the list?
No, I think...
I think one of the big items that we mentioned last week were those stone-faced walls, right, on the retaining walls?
Yeah.
Got the architecture part going here, but the, I think that's still because of what we talked about in the language of the zoning.
Sure. Do you wanna add that to the list for next week?
Is that...
It's not on here.
It's on here.
It's not on here.
I'm also just, I wanna be, I'm gonna be asking about the fence around the retention area again. You may wanna bring that up with historic and let them know that there's a safety concern on the planning board. I went back again, it's four feet deep.
This is at the street.
Our, yeah, our, you know, StanTech's telling us there's a potential concern there. I am having a hard time looking at that and saying, "We don't need to protect that," when our expert is telling us that we need to be worried about it, so...
Meaning, there's a liability if something happens.
No, I just, we rely on our experts to give us advice and she's saying it's probably a safety issue, so I completely understand the point that historic is making.
I guess one thing I would ask is whether you can consider a landscape treatment...
That's what I was thinking.
So that it's, instead of...
It's gonna have to be a hedge, it's, because trees, kids can just run through.
It's four feet of water, it's four feet of water, so I, I've been thinking about this since too.
Or you could do some sort of fence that you just cover with...
Well, you can also have a fencing which has plant materials on it, and it doesn't have to be a straight-line fence. I mean, there's all, you can do something that looks like sculpture, I mean, there's all sorts of creative ideas, right?
You want it to disappear.
Historic doesn't wanna see it at all, that's the issue, so I want historic...
Well, that's what I'm thinking, you could do like a black chain-link fence with a bunch of plantings in front of it, so you can't even see it.
So historic needs to weigh in, is all I'm saying. They're gonna be in front of historic on the 27th. I think historic needs to understand that there is a safety concern here raised by StanTech.
I think, speaking, you know, from the landscape perspective, these things, the real concern, period, is when the thing gets built, in terms of its ugliness, right, or its need to blend in. Over time, once, you know, the vegetation has taken hold and the, you know, the red-winged blackbirds are back and everything is swaying in the breeze, these, you know, blend in on our, you know...
I agree aesthetically. My concern is, this is an over-55 community. The children that are here are not here every day. So this becomes something that they're not familiar with, that is of interest, that could have water in it. So the safety concern doesn't go away for me, because...
No, I'm saying that just in terms of, as we think about these different options, fences, hedges, combination vines, you know, in terms of, a lot of times, what we plant initially to, you know, accomplish this, or what we erect initially, becomes almost the bigger detractor later on.
Visually?
Visually.
Yeah.
Right, it's the wrong vegetation because it doesn't belong in the woods. It's the, you know, so I think...
I thought your solution was quite elegant, and I was quite happy with it. So if historic can find their way back to the fence, the post fence with the black screening behind it, I would be really happy about that.
I thought that was good, too.
I thought it was a nice elegant solution.
I think you're thinking that our sons might find it interesting to play around with.
My son would definitely find it interesting.
Might too. He'd follow yours in.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's why we proposed what we did, because we think amongst the range, over time, initially and over time, it's...
Sustainable.
I agree.
And it's, and it's only visible if you're walking...
Yeah.
On the path.
It's an elegant solution, I think, so...
Beyond, so you have that fence that kinda runs parallel to Canton Avenue, and then you go up further and you have the fence along that. Now, the purpose of that is to replace the old fence, or does that have to do with stormwater up there?
Stormwater.
Is more stormwater up?
No, 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 no. The fence as it goes up along the driveway is because the fence, the field is fenced historically. It also creates a line, we can set that fence, the planned dimension off the edge of road, and then that's the mow line, in terms of what gets cut off the shoulder every day, or every week.
Of course.
Right, it's not a green, sorry, every week, and then what's beyond, and so the mowers don't drift, you know, beyond, and just a care line.
It's not gonna be right against the sidewalk, it's gonna be the care line, okay.
Yep, it's like eight feet, six feet, I forget which, what it is where, but it's...
It was there, right?
And then it's the edge of the open space.
It was there when we first started doing sidewalks.
It was only on the...
And then it disappeared.
It was only on the left-hand side going up.
On the left side, right, I remember.
This is proposed, I think, for both sides.
And that fence was, it wasn't chain-linked, but it was backed up with barbed wire, 'cause at different points there were animals in that field.
In the pasture.
In the pasture.
Yeah, we're not proposing barbed wire.
I just am concerned about having that run in a, fully all the way around the whole thing. I think the sidewalk and along the roadway makes sense, but on the other side, I mean, because now it looks like a detention basin that you're circling with the fence. Visually, that's my, so that's why I was saying, if you, even if it's not just...
On the backside.
Yeah, on the backside, maybe there's a way to use the fence that's, you're gonna have a fence going up the driveway, you have a fence going this way, there's a fence that way. I mean, is, is there some plant material at that one end to keep people from going up that way and now you don't need it up here? Because it seems like that upper end, inward side of it...
That fence isn't really meant to, it's not a protective fence anyway, it's a decorative fence, isn't it? You're not trying to keep people out other than demarcate a line, right?
I'm talking about still about the detention.
Oh, we're back to detention again? Sorry, you switched back to detention.
I'm sorry, I'm still, I didn't, I didn't weigh in before on the fact that I still aesthetically, I'm concerned about the backside because now it rings it.
Right.
And just what that means. I'm fine with the idea you wanna protect along the walkway.
You think the...
I wanna protect the whole thing.
Right, is it the...
Your son must have been much less dangerous than mine.
I lost my son at an amusement park when he was like five, that was...
So the question for you there, maybe if we break it down, you're not as worried about safety on the backside, because there's no path.
That's me personally, others, I have a different idea about that, yeah.
People can come through the woods and, you know, you won't want that. Is the, is the rail attracting too much attention to it? If it were on a black post, would that be more...
Yeah, maybe you don't have a split rail there and it's just a, the black...
Right, with no top.
Chain link with some landscape, maybe, you know, not a hedge, like you said.
Yep.
I understand that point too, 'cause that's still doing the same thing that I'm concerned about, the back, yeah.
On the back, that would be fine, yeah, the back would be fine, you don't need to have the...
Doesn't have to be the same design all the way around, right.
You don't need to have the post, I agree with that, as long as you have the screen.
So there, the heavier rail might...
That makes sense.
Attract too much attention, and the, just the black post...
It just disappears into the forest.
That's probably is a good combination.
Yeah, that makes sense, I like that.
Good.
I just feel bad for the applicant because, because first, the neighbors didn't like the chain-link fence and they came up with this solution, and now we're pushing them back, you know, so we've kind of...
Sure.
Put you through a do-si-do.
I don't like chain-link fence.
There are handfuls...
It's not a bad application.
Black disappears, though.
Really will, black will disappear.
There are a handful of issues in here that are really decisions between recommendations from two different...
Right, yeah, you're getting it.
That's right, we've gotta blend them.
And we've got to, we've got to get to deciding on these, and we also have to pick a date, I think, to be able to have revised plans submitted to us for a review, because since those are the documents that are gonna be referenced, I wanna make sure that the things, that the revisions that we see up here are all captured in what's the final document.
We understand the schedule. We understand the schedule.
20th, 30th, whatever, the last one.
We've got three meetings left. Right, because we lose Brian on April 25.
Yep.
So we've got the 28th and the 11th. We have to, we've got, you know, four weeks and two meetings to produce revised sets. We absolutely need the determination on the carriage house issue because that's not going to affect how sheets of plans get addressed, adjusted. But we have planned sets, we've got draft of special permit, we've got final revisions to all these other documents to get to. We have a lot of work to do, we have got deliverables to get to you and we know that. You know, our hope would be that you're in a position to close the public hearing on the 28th and that would give two meetings to consider the, you know, the final plans, the final draft of the special permit so that it has a chance to be signed on the, you know, on the 25th.
So when you do the revised plans, can you provide a narrative that says what you're revising? You know, rather than like a bubble, if you were bubbling drawings? Because it can, we want to draw our attention to the things that have changed. It'll save us time.
Yep. So narrative, so this sheet revised to do this.
To reflect these comments or these issues or, you know.
Sorry, when do we have that?
Well, that's.
Well, we'll try and have it to you by the end of next week so you've got a chance to review it by, you know, the 28th. And if there's something that's, you know, if it's not ready for the end of next week, we'll get it to you for the first of the weekend.
Right, because we need to keep the public hearing open as long as we still are taking documents or comments, right? And so anybody who's watching and they want to submit comments either in writing or in person, think about doing that in, within the next two weeks. Come to our next meeting and possibly the meeting after that, but we are going to have to close it in order to get done.
Yes, so, you know, I have a bunch of bullet lists. I've kind of gone through a lot of conditions and questions and issues, very many topics. And I was thinking that we, as a board, would talk about it and hear from the public, kind of a back-and-forth, because we've spent a significant amount of time listening to presentations from the applicant. And, you know, I want to kind of engage with the public now as much as I want to engage with each of you, so.
I think that's what you were suggesting.
So they have the next two?
Next two meetings.
I mean, I think, well.
I mean, one of the reasons why we broke down the presentations is so publicly we know we were talking about specific issues on some nights and that when they would be commenting more specifically. And we've come back and prepared plans and presentations in response to that.
I think we need the last meeting to review the final language of the special permit. And at that point, we shouldn't be in a public hearing anymore. So that's why I said next meeting and possibly the meeting after that. But we won't get done by the end of April if we don't close the public hearing in that, you know, by that time period, yes.
So can we get, like, very specific on the next couple agendas so that everybody, the public does know that these are the spots that you can?
We're going to have to be able to talk about everything.
Yeah.
Everything will be.
That's your time if you're interested in this.
Right, everything.
And making us specific, I meant being very specific that you have two, there's two times and, you know, this is what the next couple of meetings is going to be about.
No, my recommendation is don't even try to do that because you'll tie your own hands and you're going to have to.
I'm not talking about tying our hands, I just want the public to know that they have two opportunities.
We've been putting it on the website, too, though, what the general schedule is, so you can update the website, Lauren, right? And just say that the anticipation is that the hearing will be closing at one of the next couple of meetings and that, so just the people are on alert on the website.
Thank you, because it's been brought up many times that we have not been completely clear with public. And I want it to be very clear that there's two opportunities coming up where we're going to be going through all the finals and making decisions the third, right? And so I just want that to be, and I'm saying it now, so.
Okay, yeah. So I guess in the meantime, we've got two weeks to do our own. Denny, I think if you look through your bullet list and see which things you think are being talked about and covered and you want to add to this list.
Yep.
Things, it would be nice to have one document that kind of, if there are new things that you think haven't been discussed at all and you want to raise them first before they make it to this document, fine. But let's try and have a document that everybody's working off of.
In fairness to the applicant, we need to know what those issues are.
Right.
Because we will have to take a position relative to some of those.
Right. Hale, did you want to come forward?
Can I add to that list?
Sure.
So are you going to share that list with him?
I often say a picture.
I'll share it with Lauren.
Words, so.
Thank you.
I took photographs of something I brought up before, which is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Which is the question of what kind of curbing Northland puts into this project. And as this board knows, the town standard is for granite curbing. Northland has asked for a waiver to do mostly Cape Cod berm. So there are two pictures on this page. The first one shows a rather damaged Cape Cod berm on Route 138. And the second picture shows what's known as a sloped-faced granite curbing, which is, would be very appropriate for this site. It's a much less formal urban, less urban, more rural kind of treatment. It's a quality material, it's granite, it's much more durable than a Cape Cod berm. This development's going to have a lot of curved, pretty sharply curved roads. And, you know, in a big snow, snowplows are going to be hitting these Cape Cod berms all the time. And you're going to want, ideally, you're going to want a durable material. So I'm just making the case here that we ought to hold the developer to the town standard and put in granite curbing everywhere.
Okay, I'm sorry, Hale, because I didn't ask you to do it before, can you just give your name and address again before you leave?
Hale Smith, 1632 Canton Avenue. I'm a butter to this project.
Thank you, and I just will note, just because you don't have this in front of you, it is on our list, this particular item for our discussion.
Right, I look forward to hearing that.
Okay, thanks.
I got a question, just because I know this is going to come up and I am looking forward to this conversation, but it's probably going to be a stupid question, but where in the town, I know it's part of the bylaw, but where in the town might I find a neighborhood that has granite curb? I don't have any near me.
Indian Cliff doesn't have it.
That's a great question.
And I'm only asking, not to be wise, but more as I'd like to see it and like. The New Pulte project has it about two-thirds of the way up. That's the only place I can think of off the top of my head. In my neighborhood, do you see it on the corners, maybe, if they're new or rebuilt? We always have to put it at the entrances. I think we required it at Boyle, too, now that I think about it, so I think. Okay. Yeah, Beechwood, I'm almost positive we required it at the Beechwood Estates. That's the other one.
I drove the 55-plus neighborhoods and most of them had a significant amount of curb, of granite curbing. Fuller Village has a ton of curb. They also have Cape Cod berm, but they have a ton of granite.
So what do they do, I can drive through, they probably do the granite at the places where the.
Do it at the sidewalks.
The ADA is and all that, yeah.
Yeah, the sidewalks, the visitor area, that, over by the, like, you know how they have, like, for lack of a better word, like cottages, like their own individual units to the right? They have some Cape Cod berm there, built into the sidewalks. So I was going to ask Deborah Felton her thoughts on that. But if you go through Quessbrook, if you go through all the 55-plus, I have some notes I can bring in.
Throughout or mostly?
It's mostly. So I'm not sure which one it was, but like all the rotaries had it. They also had an interesting thing where they, I think it was Quessbrook. Like, I can bring in my notes next time. But, yeah, most of the 55-plus have a significant amount of granite.
So the thing is, is like if you look at this photo where there's no curbing, I mean, that is, I think, the aesthetic that is, you know, of kind of what's there now. And, you know, I've walked Indian Cliffs numerous times and that, you know, doesn't have any cut-through traffic because it's also kind of contained, you know, which this will be. And, you know, that gives it a less formal kind of appearance. I mean, I actually would advocate for no curb at all, just for the aesthetic value of it.
Which is what this ends up being, a Cape Cod berm. So after one of our questions, there will be a curb, it'll be fine.
Yeah, is this a concrete curb?
No, it's asphalt.
I agree, asphalt doesn't hold up and that's why, I mean, you do, if it gets nicked, it looks not, it doesn't look good.
Where we proposed it is at the entry up to the point where you, the width of the road transitions, at the curve to the turn into the loop.
And you propose what, sorry?
Vertical granite, vertical granite.
But you're proposing Cape Cod in between?
And at the, and at the stream crossings.
So what do you think about no curb in between?
The issue with no curbing is that stormwater.
Right, we have to catch for pre-treatment.
You have to capture pre-treatment.
Everywhere, so no country drainage.
But what about just where you flare it instead of?
That is what we have.
Oh, so not the rounded?
No, it's not the bread loaf curb. No, it's just the, it's this much. It's not the big bread loaf.
Because that's, this is the big bread loaf.
Right.
So I guess my question.
So that's a big difference. Is that on the plan that way? Because I thought, do you know, that it's.
It should be, yeah, I think so.
So it's just a little mound?
No, it's just a slight incline. That's totally different than these big round things. That's the big round thing.
Oh, no.
So, I have a question then.
Did you see the photo?
A little bit, I didn't see that one very well.
I just want to make sure this is, like you would say, that this is not what you're proposing.
Well, it's not there, so.
And you can see it, that's what the bump, the piece of it, yeah.
So I guess my question would be then, being that this is private and there's a reason for that, for the runoff, I mean, you would think, or I would hope that, you know, if it turned into that, I would think that the neighborhood association, or whatever they are, the homeowner association would want to fix that or else it's going to look terrible.
That's applied a whole lot differently, that's a separate installation point where you have.
It's part of construction.
Right, so when that's constructed, you have your base.
Yeah.
And you run the curb and then you run your finish up to that. So you basically have three, you know, points coming together.
Can you bring a photograph of?
Why it breaks when the plow hits it, right?
I'm just asking to bring a photograph of what the actually, that detail would look like. Because, I mean, nobody wants it to look like this, obviously. I wouldn't think the homeowners would either.
But I think the point, one of the points is that granite gets built in and this kind of Cape Cod berm just gets placed on top, so it's just pavement, so it doesn't withstand.
I think that's not what we're going to do.
That's not what we have. We have a flared.
So you don't have an asphalt, Cape Cod berm is not an asphalt?
We have a, we have a flared asphalt. It's not, it's just, we'll bring a picture.
It's integral to the way they do, they roll the asphalt and then they flare the edges up instead of applying a lump on top.
It's not a separate piece sitting on top. That's going to get.
Take a look, if you have time, I'll send you some of the addresses.
Yeah, well, I personally like the idea of using the both, right, during the areas where you need the granite and ones where you don't. Because I like most neighborhoods, you know, in front of my house, I can't even imagine having a granite sidewalk, I wouldn't want that. I like that it's just grass and it.
Sure, but along the sidewalk, so we're going to have a sidewalk going in, we're going to have a sidewalk all the way around. I, when I saw it in these neighborhoods, I will say that granite did look very nice. You're going to have to have something there anyway.
That happens where the sidewalk is directly next to the street because there's a grade separation that you have to have so the cars don't mount. Our sidewalk is four feet.
There's grass at the beginning.
Grass strip that's four feet wide between the edge of the pavement and the sidewalk. So in that case, that separation is adequate so that you don't need the vertical area.
Okay, I'll think about that.
So maybe you can highlight the detail in your drawing for us.
Yeah, vertical is obviously important at turns because trucks can mount, you know, you have to channel them, plows, you have to make sure that they don't damage. But on Mandarin and straights, you don't, you don't need that.
So like at Woodmere, we have vertical granite at the entrance and then it transitions to the, to the flared asphalt.
So Woodmere has the flared asphalt.
Woodmere has, yeah.
Okay, so we can go look at that.
Yeah. Okay, so, Lauren? Because we do have a decision to sign, so it's going to have us finish this up now and we can just assign it. Oh, sorry, I thought you were looking at me like, don't even think about talking about something else.
Motion to continue to March 28th at 7:15.
It blows right here.
Oh, really?
April, can you give us?
Oh, second, second.
All those in favor?
I'm in favor.
What time?
7:15. Thank you. Okay, so we had, last week we said we approved the site plan decision for 7 Pleasant Street, 7 to 9 Pleasant Street, the bench. Yeah, and we said, subject to John Flynn's review. So John Flynn reviewed it.
Thank you.
I think all of the things that he changed would be, I would say, legal and/or.
No, substantive.
Right.
Pretty minimal changes. They've also been reviewed with the applicant's attorney.
No substantive.
I reviewed them earlier and I found them to be mostly things of that nature. Are all things of that nature?
Good night, Ned.
Good night, thank you.
Night.
Thank you, good night.
We have to sign with blue, right?
Do you need blue?
As long as one person signs it, we don't have to.
Really?
Yeah, because that shows it's an original.
Oh, okay.
Oh, huh.
Of course, the scanners now.
Exactly. Yeah.
We have some meeting minutes piling up. We have some meeting minutes piling up, so I'm guilty myself of not getting through them all. So if we can all, you know, with this, it's a lot to go through in the next few weeks already, but it's, you know, I do, I am mindful of how far along it gets from the public being able to see them in a.
Yeah, do you have the one with the highlight?
Is that your pen or?
No.
Okay, with that, I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn. Take it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We did it, we did it.